This is a sound check. Mayor, Councilmember Burns. If you can hear us, thank you.
So Chris or Trey, who do we have in the room today? Besides Brad?
Mr. Mayor, we have Mr. Borden here, Mr. Cavanagh's upstairs, and of course you saw Brad.
Okay.
I'm here, I just didn't have my screen on.
Hey Liz, how was camping?
It was really good, thank you.
Did your family have a fun time?
Yeah, we did, it's our one trip that we scheduled previously and we needed to leave our house so bad, so. Yep, feel very, uh, feel very good now that I got, got out into nature for sure.
Good.
How are you guys doing? Cool.
All right, Chris, are we ready?
Mr. Mayor, yes, we just admitted the last council member, you're good to go.
All right. Well, with that, I'll call this meeting to order. For the record, it is Tuesday, August 25th at 4:30 PM. It will begin our work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borden.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Byrne.
Here.
Here. Uh, next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
House Member.
Were you sure that someone wasn't knocking at your door earlier?
Uh, I, I've got my ring set to silent, so we're good.
All right, so adoption of the agenda, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
I got a motion.
A motion second to adopt the agenda as presented, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. Next item is a consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and for the clerk to attest.
Second the motion.
I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda, is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we will move right on into our department commission reports. And first item is item number 15 from the mayor's office, the CARES Act Municipal Small Business Grant Program. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Miles.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, can you hear me? Okay, thumbs up. Chris, I believe I've got screen sharing ability. I think so.
You sure do, hit your screen share, there you are.
So I think all of you can see the, the PDF that's up on screen, this is supporting data. So before I jump into that, I just, you know, really high level, I know you're busy and I recognize that tonight. So I'll try and stay high level, I did include several documents in the agenda packet this week. Uh, my intent is not necessarily to get into the details of the draft program guidance, but we can certainly talk about it, answer any questions that you have. But we do want to bring forth the concept, this is related to the CARES Act funding, related to COVID virus. Uh, with intent of helping small businesses is where we're coming from. I am looking for your direction and feedback this afternoon on the program and its concepts. And we'll go through some of the, the things that we've talked about in partnership with finance, the legal office, as well as community development, economic development with Victoria Cleary. So to give you some background, at the high level for Meridian CARES Act funding and the money that's been going back and forth between the federal agencies, the state and the city. Um, on the screen you'll see in this upper left, Meridian received overall, or was allocated, excuse me, roughly $3.67 million in CARES Act funding for COVID-related needs. Um, over the last couple of months during the coronavirus, we have put in a request totaling roughly for $574,000 for various items. Of that 574,000, roughly 508,000 has been approved, which I'll call earmarked in this case, for expenditures that the state has said, yes, we see the need, recognize that that's a eligible expense. And therefore, you can expend those dollars, they haven't been expended to date, but they could be expended, leaving us with a balance of about $3.1 million remaining of allocated funding. The CARES Act funding that we have approved or earmarked of that 508,000, you can see the breakdown on the right. Roughly three quarters of it has gone to technology upgrades between anything from the council chamber upgrades, hardware technology, computer technology, everything related to hardware technology, or cameras, or getting laptops for people that needed remote work, either during the initial stay at home, or moving forward as we progress in this remote work environment. Uh, the remaining funds you can see have been spent on PPE, personal protective equipment, uh, or business support in, uh, combination with the Chamber of Commerce, we've worked with them roughly $37,000 to partner with them on a marketing campaign for keeping Meridian healthy. And then some smaller expenses on COVID testing, some initial testing we did with the fire department for firefighters, and also working with the police department for proctoring online exams. So that just gives you a high level scenario of where we are with the coronavirus funding that was allocated to Meridian. Separate from that, the state's funding that has occurred related to businesses in Meridian is down here on the bottom section. You can see that various businesses have received funding in Meridian, and they've used that funding for any number of purposes, the majority of which has been put towards equipment, inventory, PPE, and rent assistance, rental assistance. Um, and then this bottom right shows the breakdown of the size of businesses that have received funding. I think this is important to note for this afternoon's conversation, the majority of businesses are less than 100 people. Um, and you can see the breakdown here, you've got one to four, 29%, and then you just work around clockwise, five to nine, 10 to 19, 20 to 49, and then 50 to 99. There are few businesses, I think it's around 15 total, that are more than 250 in Meridian that have received, or excuse me, that are in Meridian. So moving on from there, I wanted to capture the snapshot of the document that I put in the agenda related to this proposal, and this proposal is for a small grant, small business grant assistance. And what we're proposing is a concept of using roughly a million dollars of that remaining $3.1 million that's allocated to the city, and earmarking that roughly $1 million to support small businesses that need it, that meet the eligibility criteria based on the US Treasury guidance, the state guidance, and any additional restrictions that the city puts on, um, to protect our interest. And really, the three goals are, again, we want to help businesses where we can, we want to mitigate any city risk, and the majority of that city risk is if, uh, funds were awarded to ineligible costs or to ineligible businesses based on treasury guidance. The city would ultimately be responsible at the end of the day for those funds, so if the city awarded $10,000 to a business, and we weren't supposed to do that, or there was some reason they were ineligible, the city would be held liable for that and have to go back and find that $10,000. So that's, that's the, really the major risk. The other risks though are, there's some administrative time and costs spent in administering this program, we've talked with finance, we've talked with economic development, we think we can make it happen. We do know that it's, there's work, but we're willing to do that work and can do that work. Um, and then additionally, there are some consulting dollars that need to be expended and putting some of that risk, recognizing the consultant will do a lot of the decision-making based on the parameters that we set up. So again, at a high level, we're looking to earmark a million dollars for small businesses. There are some administrative costs in software and consultant needs, we originally estimated roughly $25,000 between those two. I think that figure may be low based on conversations we've recently had with economic development and legal, uh, especially towards the consultant. But if the, if the council is comfortable, we could set a limit to say up to a certain threshold for consulting and software improvements, whether that number is, you know, if we were to say up to $50,000 could be used for the consultant. And we could have a discussion about, um, where their, where their costs are on their hourly rate and what their services are needed for. We would also recommend that the city have a legal agreement in place with these businesses, so that businesses recognize that there is a legal requirement that they have to acknowledge they have not received funding in other areas of COVID relief funding, because that's one of the state requirements and one of the federal requirements, and we feel it's prudent for the city to recognize that additionally, to say, we want to work with you, but we need to have some legal assurance that, that you are requesting money that you haven't requested for before. Maybe I'll stop there, take some questions, I think that's it at a high level, there's a lot of details in the program document, happy to talk about them. But we are finding that our goal is really to make this simple, and we've already had discussions as recently as yesterday about how to simplify that program document to make it a little easier for businesses to use. The, the reason for the simplicity is twofold, one, to make it easy for businesses so that they can be helped in a timely manner, and two, these funds as currently allowed under the state procedure have to be expended by the end of December 2020. So it's a short timeframe to get something implemented, active, applications reviewed, and money expended. We recognize that, we know it's a short timeline, however, I do think it's valuable to be able to try and offer the service even though it's a short timeline. So I'll stop there, I'm sure there's a lot of questions, happy to take them, um, and go from there.
Thanks Dave, Council, just a few comments to add on before we get, take some additional comments, but this isn't up to number even for the grants. Uh, you know, it's fully dependent upon businesses looking to utilize the funding, so there's no, no guarantee that this is a dollar figure that will be spent. Uh, our neighbors to the east and west are both doing similar programs, in fact, a lot of this is modeled off of the one that NAPA has put together, including the consultant information from that standpoint. So, and as Dave mentioned, there, there is a chance that this, uh, they could give us the authority to utilize these CARES funds into 2021. Which is part of the reason, you know, we are setting a limit and moving forward cautiously in case there's additional needs or opportunities. But, um, it is a way to try to help some of our, our businesses through what could be some even rougher times as we come into, you know, before and up to the holiday season. So with that, I'm happy to entertain questions from Mr. Miles, or I don't know if we have Victoria with us at all on the call, I didn't see her, but questions, comments from Council, and of course, this is asked to receive fact to be approved even at that point in time.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember.
So you mentioned, or Dave mentioned earlier that, uh, that a consultant would be used, uh, and also you, he mentioned that, uh, the staff in the finance department and economic development as well would be used, so what does that look like, and this is probably one of my greatest concerns is the time spent on this, I, I looked through that application, it's extensive, I mean, there's just, there's, I mean, with all the respect, Tori's a one-person show for the most part, I mean, for her to even remotely come close to even handling this would be an impossibility. Um, I know that finance is bogged down with their, their daily use, and so, um, this is a real concern, so I, I like to know what, um, what, what time spent versus consultant versus finance in the economic development department. And on top of that, could, could CARES funds be used to pay for a consultant as well as the, as the, uh, um, obviously as the, uh, along with the program itself, so those are my, right off the bat, those are the two questions that I have.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember. Yes, so, last question first, consulting dollars, consulting expense could be covered by the CARES Act funding as part of this program. And to the mayor's point, we do plan on submitting this program for pre-approval to the state, if the council so chooses to move it forward, so that we would have that assurance that, yes, we put those consulting dollars in the cost. Um, and, and know that they're covered beforehand. In terms of the work and the hours spent, um, we have talked with the consultant initially and estimate that the consultant would spend about five hours per application. Um, and they have given us sort of an hourly rate of $30 an hour, up to, with the $15,000, that gives you about, uh, what is that? 500 hours of, of time could be spent um, for their review, the consultant is intended to do the majority of the work. Uh, with finance involved, the, the level of work for finance would be essentially receiving the recommended applications to move forward to the state and submitting those for direct reimbursement through the CARES Act, the uh, CFAC committee, which is what they're currently doing with the city requests. From the economic development standpoint, uh, down in community development, um, there is some bandwidth with, um, Tori and with Crystal, to be able to assist in questions from the consultant and to be a conduit for questions and help in applications related to the neighborly software, which is what we currently use for CDBG funding, and that's the software cost you see on the screen there of $10,000 to build a module, have a, have neighborly as the company build the module, that could be utilized as well by the applicants, so the intent really is to have minimal staff touch on community development side, where they're helping with the application component of any questions on the software side. We understand there'll be a touch point, um, and they, they have said they understand that, they know that. But again, I think some of this is based on how many businesses use it as well, to the mayor's point, this is an up to number that we've thrown out there to say, you know, if, if you approve, spend up to a million dollars. We may or may not, may or may not get enough businesses to, to utilize all that, some of it, or none of it. So cognizant of the staff impact, but it, at least at this point in time, I think it's a little unknown until we get into it, um, but we do have contingencies set aside. And one of the things to consider is perhaps we set the consulting dollars to an up to number, maybe we say up to $50,000 and find out if they have the bandwidth to do all of the work, with the exception of the necessary submittal to finance.
And just on that, I mean, ultimately, we need to have city eyes touching this. We're, we're the ones liable, as much as I want to say yes to a consultant to do, um, all the touch points, but, you know, I, I think our newly minted, uh, Todd LaVoy, who got his certification from the, uh, from AIC officially yesterday for completing his 100 hours. Would concur that we, we have, we're liable for the money, we need to make sure that money is, uh, going to be spent, um, and not be a liability to the taxpayers from our general fund.
Yeah, Mayor, I would concur that we do have concerns, um, and we've talked about the concerns of managing a small business grant, we don't have the, we don't have the experience within finance of all the moving parts. We're concerned that the monitoring aspect of providing funds, like you talked about, Robert, giving those funds and monitoring those funds and making sure those companies spend it on the right or allowable expenses, that's what we're concerned about, in our federal funding management, that is the most risk that we see with providing funds to other agencies, is to verify and monitor that, that they've spent the money in a timely and allowable fashion. And I agree with you, Robert, that's going to probably have to be a hands-on deck approach for us, I don't think we want to consult or use the consultant for that, but if we did, the consultant has to be very familiar with the federal guidelines and making sure that the costs that we're discussing are allowable, that they're spending those dollars on. Um, so again, Robert, I agree with you that we do have concerns, uh, and that we will have to have our hands, uh, more involved with it, along with the legal department, I think legal's going to have to be very involved with it since they're going to be setting up all these subrecipient agreements to make sure that they're adhering to the requirements that we're setting forth, because David Miles mentioned, we are ultimately responsible for that, and that is kind of scary for us.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
To that extent then, Dave, uh, if, if an applicant doesn't, doesn't spend the funds correctly, what does that look like for the city, I mean, what's the exposure? It, it, not, I'm not talking about the application process, or whether they, um, come, whether they're in compliance with the original criteria, but later on down the road, after the funds have been spent by the applicant, is there any, um, concern on the city's part, any responsibility on the city's part?
Yeah, uh, Mayor and Councilwoman Perrow, and certainly I'll defer to Mr. Neri, um, as well, however, the, the in conversation with, uh, Emily Kane and Legal, the reason for the, what we're calling the grantee agreement, that would have to be signed as subrecipient agreement, for lack of a better word. Um, would at least create that legal connection between the city and the recipient, and that if we are, we as a city are audited, or if the state is audited, and therefore the city is audited at some later point in time. There's a legal connection back to the money and to the business, with the intent being that if the city needed to and chose to, we could then go back and, um, have legal action, and certainly I'll defer to Mr. Neri, but, um, that's the intent of the legal agreement.
The, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, um, yeah, I think as Dave stated earlier, the, the, the risk to the city is that we are ultimately responsible back to the feds for the money. The intent of the subrecipient agreement, uh, would be to give us a mechanism for collection, but again, we're not a bank, so we're not going to be looking at collateral and credit checks and those kinds of things, so, um, you know, basically, it, there's four concerns that we have to at least be thoughtful of as we move forward with this program, and I know we're sometimes the worst-case scenario people, but that's kind of what we get paid for. Um, one of it is the rules aren't real clear yet, that's, that's one problem, is that they appear to be writing the rules as they speak, but they don't write them down and send them to us, so we're not totally sure what all the rules are yet, and so there's that concern of how do we manage that landscape without some clarity on what is acceptable and what is not. So that's going to be a challenge, so that's just something to know about. Um, the subrecipient agreements I think are a great mechanism, uh, but also be mindful, potentially you're talking up to 66 of these grants. So that's a lot of agreements and a lot of enforcement, and a lot of enforcement for $10,000 or $15,000, so that could be problematic, again, hopefully we're not going to have to enforce many of these, but that is going to be an issue just again to be aware of. Again, we don't know what we don't know yet, there's still a lot of unclear direction here with how they want this done, with other than the big hook as Todd has raised, as we're ultimately responsible for it. So, again, I don't think it's, the, the last concern is the window is so short, I, I, I am hopeful as the mayor is, that the reality is, is no one can do this, you know, as much as, as they would like to in that sort of window to make it really effective, and that extending it seems likely, and that happens often in the feds programs, that they recognize that the window is too short and they give you a little more time, so that may open itself up a little bit, but we really are talking about a four-month window to hire a consultant, put together a set of guidelines and then review, again, possibly 60-plus of these applications, and then make sure if, if there's a requirement that we have to get them, uh, secondarily approved by, by the feds, that'll again, slow the process down, so there's just some things to be aware of, I don't think any of them are insurmountable, but if you, as you want to move forward, I think you just need to know, there may be, we may be coming back and having a few more conversations on what's going on.
And, and while Bill's job is to be the Debbie Downer, my job is also to say, we do these all the time, uh, we, we allocate half a million dollars a year under CDBG, you know, same basic principle, those are agreements, those have risks, those can be paid back. Um, I don't know that we've ever had to go and enforce against somebody for that purpose, so it's not completely foreign in the concept. And I like to think that, as I always hear everyone say, local government is nimble, we can do things faster, we can do things better, we don't have to get bogged down completely in the federal, um, processes, even the state was able to pull this off in less than four months. So, I, I, I would like to think that we, I, I'm not, I don't want to downplay that there is some challenges with doing these, but I also want to say that the state has been doing, doing these for businesses under the PPE program, we've been doing grants. We do have some experience in, in this arena, so this is not 100% brand new in terms of what's being done, and other cities are going down this road as well, which doesn't mean we have to do it either, just trying to balance the, the scales of justice just a little bit, um, in, in, uh, application.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Miles.
Yeah, just to your point, just so council is aware, the other cities, we've been talking with Napa, and certainly Boise are discussing the ideas. Napa has already submitted a project proposal to the state for approval. They haven't received that yet, to my knowledge. I'm aware of Garden City has also implemented a program. They've taken a little bit of a different approach, where they are putting out a request for applications, and then they will submit those applications to the state. So I just wanted to be open with who we've talked to across the other cities that are interested. In fact, I got a call today from Lincoln County Commissioner, who's interested in, in what we and what Napa have thrown together as a draft at least as well. So there are other cities talking about it, to the mayor's point, just so you're aware.
Mr. Mayor.
I was going to go to Councilman Kavner, because he's had his mic off and ready to speak.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I, I really want to applaud you and your team for kind of this proactive approach. I think like staff and Councilman Burt, I've got my share of concerns. I guess a couple of clarifying pieces, then. First one, as I understand with CDBG, that's a, that's a reimbursement model. So an organization expense funds and we reimburse. I didn't get a sense from the memo that, that we would be following the same process. Did I misunderstand the memo?
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Kavner, you're correct. This is a grant program. We would, we would receive application. If an application approved, provide funding.
Okay, thank you. And then my, my second question, I think, is more in line with where Councilmember Burt was coming from. If, if a business is interested in participating, ultimately, who are they calling? Who are they speaking with? I mean, who is our, going to be our main point of contact for that? Is that going to be Torian Economic Development? Is that going to be somebody in the Finance Department? Is it going to be the consultant? Who ultimately, you know, with CDBG, all of our applicants work with Crystal. And my assumption is that, to, to the mayor's point, that process works really, really well. But we're dealing with a small handful with CDBG, which a potential much larger handful of people, if we were to move forward this program. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around. I know that we could divert some of the work to a consultant, but ultimately, somebody's going to be the face for this. I'm just curious where you and the team have landed as to who that's going to be.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Kavner, in conversations with economic development and Tori, it would likely be a combination between Tori and Crystal as the quote-unquote face, meaning who gets the initial questions. It will really be a committee effort, probably between Tori, Crystal, and, and Community Development, myself, and in concert with, when it gets to a finance reimbursement component, Karen Woodell down in Finance, who's currently handling our CARES Act requests.
Thank you.
And I know council is, you know, you're, you're kind of getting your fingers around this. Just ask you to remember, my job is to make sure their staffing is available to do the things I bring forward to you. I, I will manage the staffing elements and help people prioritize, because I think keeping our, our local businesses, if they're able to move to utilize these to stay afloat, I'm going to, I'm going to ask our departments to prioritize the needs here versus maybe something else that isn't as important or as time-consuming, but I'll manage the staffing needs or the consulting element from that standpoint. I really would want to know your comfort level on the direction of the program itself.
Okay, thank you.
Or not.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman Perrow.
As it relates to the $15,000 that's proposed for the consultant, how did it come to be that five hours was the amount of time estimated for each application? And so give us a, give us some thoughts on that. Is, with the additional proposed amount, so Dave, you had said we could go up to X dollars. Is that with the intention that it might take more time per application? Or that, or that you intend on having additional applications? In ter, in terms of estimating the amount that would be set aside for the consultant? And then, what, with the consultant, is this, is this an, do you have somebody that's already in mind that, that does this as a profession? Or talk to us a little bit more about that piece, if you would.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perrow, great questions. Again, last question first. Yes, we in conversations with Napa, who sort of took the first step in this, they have a consultant who apparently was a former employee who worked in CDBG and had left the city of Napa and is available for that effort. So they've got familiarity in grants, they've got familiarity in reviewing applications and going through that process. And so through this program, we're able to utilize that, that consultant, if we choose. And so there is experience there. In terms of the breakdown, their estimate based on sort of standard work of reviewing applications, that we, that's where the five hours came up with, and that in terms of collecting, compiling applications, reviewing those applications, working inside of the neighborly software system to compile the recommendations and approval list, that's compiling that five hours. The thought process, and if you do the hourly rate times the five hours, times the number of applications, that's where you get to the 15,000. The thought process of potentially increasing the consulting dollars is really around, around the thought of something we touched on earlier of, is there more that the consultant could do and less that we would ask staff to do without giving up that risk mitigation assurance that Mr. LaVoy spoke about? And so trying to balance that, and you know, I do apologize, this is a little bit of a, it's an ebb and flow conversation, because we're trying to actively work in a short timeframe and continuously improve the documents as we want to come to you and, and before we put more effort into it, get, get alignment, make sure that council's comfort with the direction moving forward, or not.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I mean, it's just from a philosophical perspective, you know, you hear about like hedge funds and, you know, companies that don't need money accessing federal money. I view this very differently. It's truly helping the small businesses in our community that are based here. I trust you guys to put the adequate guardrails around the execution of it. The only piece that I think would be helpful is just, we take a step back, we have $3 million of care funding, how did the $1 million get chosen? What does the landscape look like of other programs that could access those dollars? Are there other initiatives that may be competing for future dollars? And how do we feel about the amount that we have left over, if you will, in case the city incurs additional expenses related to COVID?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, that's a great question. And the million dollars was really, it was a number that was picked. We have to start somewhere, and it was a recognition that it's roughly 28% of the remaining unallocated funds to the city. And I'll let Mr. LaVoy, if he's still on, speak to the, the financial health of the city and projections related to COVID. And without putting words into his mouth, not being too concerned with future COVID impacts at this point in time and running out of COVID dollars based on this number, or not being able to fund the issues or concerns we may come across. In terms of other agencies, other organizations that may need help or other needs that come up, I think that's a great question and, and how it relates. You know, we're having some conversations through our office with the school board, the YMCA, and some local faith organizations about when schools, which I know they're talking about right now, when they make the decision, is there a need beyond what current programs exist that the city could help with? So it's a great question. I don't have an answer for you on, on that, but you know, I, we've got roughly $2 million, 2.1 after a program like this, and is, is that sufficient for city funds? I'll let Mr. LaVoy answer that, but I think the answer is at least right now, yes. Other programs, I don't know what's out there or what may come down the road.
And, and honestly, I'm the one that said a million dollars. I think that they came forward with 750,000, which again, was just another number, but really, the, the main things that we potentially could have is PPE expenses as well as overtime expenses. Those, those are really the last two or another program. And if we're talking between now and December, I would ask someone a lot smarter and better at math to tell me if we could even spend that much money in overtime if we tried. For police and fire, maybe we could, I, I, I don't know. But with where we are at COVID right now, I don't see those, those numbers trending upwards, maybe until it gets into a much colder season of November, December. And now, of course, if they're extended through next year, we could get into a place where we maybe don't have access to as much as we once did. Which, you know, that's something that I can't answer that question.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick, I agree with that, just a quick question.
Councilwoman Schrader, yeah.
Yeah, I don't need, I don't need Todd to go into that. Logic seemed very sound. I, I guess just from a mechanical perspective with these types of dollars, I'm just not familiar with them. If we earmark a million dollars, can we move money into another eligible expense later if we don't utilize the funds and a different need arises?
I think that's probably more of Mr. Miles, who's been doing the CARES Act submissions.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, my understanding is yes. If, if we don't utilize money and it's still allocated to the city, we could, for all intents and purposes, reallocate those remaining funds to something else, is my understanding. It's, it's really a matter of if we spend it, if we seek the actual reimbursement and take the money, that money is spent.
Mayor.
Where was that noise from?
Jessica. Um, so, Mr. Miles, let's say there's a scenario where an applicant applies for the full amount that they could potentially qualify for, and they purchase a, say, an air filtration system for their, their company that is probably, you know, perhaps it's a system that's, that's way more, way more than they really need for their building, way more than they really need for their office, their staff size, and they sell that filtration system to make money. Is that, you go down that road, is that then something that, that the city is responsible for? I mean, how far do, do we get? You know, how much responsibility do we really carry, carry with what the applicant spends those funds on as far as the state or the federal government's concerned? And how do we sort of vet, I mean, obviously, our staff and probably the consultants aren't specialists in every kind of business and every kind of, of item. It is such a broad range of things that the applicants can apply for, for changes to their physical structures or for their staffing. How far does the responsibility go?
Yeah, and, and here I thought we, we'd already thought of every question. Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perrow, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that specific question. I can get that answer for you, though. We can do some research. I, we, I won't speak my opinion. I, I, I tend to think it'd be impossible for us to be responsible for that on a sale, but we'll certainly get you the answer. We can reach out to the state.
Mr. Law, it looks like you want to weigh in.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I can just refer to our general funding, our general management of grant funds. We are responsible for the end product. We do require audits on all expenditures that occur from a sub-recipient agreement. I would not expect it to be any much different, hence the comment I made earlier about the ongoing management and oversight of the funds. Again, so we are responsible for itself, like Jessica Perrow, if your company got current funds from the government for PPE, you're responsible for submitting your receipts right now to the federal government for that act. I don't see it being much different. That's just my opinion on experience with other grants. I go with what Mr. Miles said. Let's do some research and give you the final, final answer. I'm just given the experience of our CDBG grant management up to date.
And at the end of the day, if someone takes the money and they go out of business two days later, there's nothing we can do about it. You know, no matter how they spend it or, or what they do. So there is always that risk of how effective will they be? And honestly, I would, you know, Mr. Miles and the group, I, I wanted to go a little bit further and have a little bit more requirements for the money to even be able to be there, but it, it create a lot more staff time, a lot more questions, and a lot more headaches. So I, 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 I agree with staff in this, in the sense that's, you know, you, you can't solve bad actors necessarily. You can just try to avoid bad problems.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yes, just a final question. The state program, I thought, was really interesting, because it published the recipients of funds, is my understanding. There was a level of transparency around that. And I think accountability, at least in the public sphere, about, you know, who's taking money for different things. Are, are we intending to do a similar level of transparency around the recipients of the Meridian funding?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Schrader, yes, that's a requirement of this program through the state level, is that businesses that we awarded money to would still be published in the state, because ultimately, we have to put it back to the state to get their reimbursement anyway. And we actually talked about potentially creating yet another section on our Meridian COVID page, strictly to this program, to capture business money received. So that'd be another measure of that.
Thank you.
Councilman Burt, did you have a comment?
Mr. Mayor. I do have some comments, but I'll wait until after Mr. Hockland's done.
Oh, okay, it's Mr. Hockland, Councilman Hockland.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I think Mr. Borton would like to weigh in at some point, too, but a couple of question, what-if questions again for Dave. Dave, if, if you'd mentioned during your discussion earlier about, you know, there's a possibility it could go beyond the four months, that there could be a extension of the program, different things. So if we have businesses that qualify for the monthly draw of $10,000 a month, they've already been on four months, it gets extended. Are, are they done? Are we going to extend them if they still qualify? What, what, what are your thinking, what's your thinking on that?
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Hockland, so right now, the recommendation is not to exceed $15,000 to any one business. I think there's discussion, room for discussion about how that $15,000 gets allocated, whether that's a one-time $15,000. What we wrote up and what we recommended initially was a $10,000 initial award, and if there is a need and request for this, the remaining $5,000, we issue it that and then stop there. We had talked about other strategies or other methodologies to award money, which would allow that avenue, or the, the item that you're talking about, where you could eventually, you could actually award per month up to a certain amount, but we don't recommend issuing more than $15,000 total to any one business. Just based on what we've seen the state do and what we've seen the federal guidelines do for other small business programs, they've been in that range of $10,000 to $20,000.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, to, to follow up, I had another what-if question, but on the project consideration, it talked about 25 businesses can qualify for, since they had a monthly draw of $10,000, and it didn't have the any, you know, it seemed like that was, went, went on. So that's good to know. It's, it's limited still to 15,000. The other what-if is if they take that money, they, and then they just stay open for a month, and then they close their doors. What, what, what happens in that scenario?
And Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hockland, I think to the mayor's point earlier is we don't have control over a business that may close its doors, whether it's closure or not, and that's, to some degree, that's the risk of providing this money as a grant, which is what it is. It's a grant program. You're giving the money based on a need perceived under the application or explained in the application. And I, I don't, I see Todd nodding his head, we don't have control over that. If they close their doors, they close their doors, I think.
Thank you.
Councilman Borton, did you have some comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. A couple of them. The, the materials show they've got eligible applicants, certain characteristics, these bullet points of what makes you an eligible applicant. And then looking at this application, I'm trying to get a sense of is someone going to apply and based upon what's on the application, somebody internal or external might review it and then say, I don't like your experience, organizational capacity, I'm going to deny it, or your P and L from 2019 to 2020 hasn't changed enough, so I'm going to deny it. Is it, is it designed to be that mushy for whomever receives the application to up or down a requister who otherwise checks the boxes above on 2.2, I think, eligible applicants? So if I'm a 2.2, I check all those boxes, could I still get denied if my answers aren't good enough?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, that's a great question, great perspective. We've talked about that a lot. I think that's part of the challenge with this program is We've talked about that a lot. I think that's part of the challenge with this program is protecting the city's interest and the taxpayers' interest. While trying to help businesses and. The intent was to have the, whether it's the consultant or anybody else, but in this case, the consultant. Reviewing applications for legitimacy of the need and the application. Um, certainly, the intent would be to define the criteria enough to say. Based on business practices, is this a viable investment? The, the flip side is, we could simply say. Are you eligible under section two point two guidelines or criteria and leave it at that, however. In our conversations, it seems like a, a better use of city funds or the, the federal money through the city. To have some level of checks and balances about, are we just giving good money to bad, so to speak?
A couple of the quick ones, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
Is there a, is there a drop dead date working backwards that this? Program, however, would go forward, would be on a city council agenda for a vote and approval? From today's discussion to a end of it, when, how much time is there?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burton, there's not a drop dead date, uh, given the fact if you work off of just the end of December twenty twenty. Again, it's a tight timeframe. Knowing that NAPA has submitted to the state, I believe it was about a week and a half to two weeks ago and hasn't heard an answer yet, and we would propose to do that as well. We're kind of stuck with waiting to see how long that would take. And we certainly, uh, a recommendation could be to come back to this body. Once preapproval is authorized before enacting the program, if that's a, um, preference of the council. That would be the best I can give you for a drop dead date, is sort of waiting on however long it takes the state to review what we submit them. And then coming back to council before we actually roll it out to the businesses and the public.
Another, here's another quick one.
Councilman Burton.
Um, is Garden City's process of, of compiling applications directly to the state? Eliminate liability for Garden City and take them out of that equation?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burton, as I understand it, they're not taking themselves out of the equation. They're simply not submitting for preapproval as a program. They've rolled out the program based on how the state lined it out with the three parameters and eight criteria. And said, we will review applications against these criteria. Once we approve a packet of. Um, applications, we'll submit those directly to the state. So they're, they're just skipping the preapproval process, is my understanding.
Mr. Mayor, last one.
Councilman Burton.
They're, they're quick hitters. Um, when we look at what would be an eligible applicant or the application itself. Uh, my sense is there are parameters, the, the hooks from spending federal money, like you gotta pay Davis Bacon wages, for example. That those are hooks that any applicant must at least acknowledge that they're gonna comply with. Um, I guess that's part of the sub recipient agreement?
Correct, Mr. Mayor, Council. Sorry, correct, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burton, yes, and in fact, we had that discussion about, um. Davis Bacon wages as well and whether or not contractors are being hired. And, and yes, if, if a sub recipient were receiving. Money for those types of things that require those, so to speak, federal hooks, they would have to, uh, acknowledge that and that'd be part of the sub recipient agreement.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burke.
We probably need to move along a little bit, um. But I, I appreciate the discussions taking place, cause I, I think ultimately, I think this is a, a program that has a lot of potential, that can help a lot of people. I, uh, I, I have a good friend who, uh, found out about some of the self-employed. Benefit grant opportunities from the state, but he was too late to, um, to apply, and so he's like, crap, if I would have. Known, I would have been able to get that money and he met all the eligibility, so this type of program will help a lot of people that weren't. Um, that were, weren't able to apply with the state. With that said, I, I, I think that thi- this is a, this is, this is gonna be a time-consuming thing. Uh, especially if you get into the Ba- Davis Bacon situation and, and contractors and where that money goes and how much oversight is needed. And how detailed you have to be in those, and, and that information. I, I think that we're gonna, it's gonna, there's gonna be more, I would, I would prefer. Not one hundred percent oversight by a contractor by any means, but I think more than maybe what we're. Planning for, because the last thing I want, and I'm, I'm sure my fellow council members would agree, is to. Have Tori and her team and, and Todd and his team dedicate a lot of time and a lot of resources. Um, for this, so hopefully we can, you know, think about this more and, and tackle this and, and, and have further discussion. Um, so, those are, those are my.
He- here, here's where I am, is I, I need thumbs up or thumbs down to submit to the state. Um, because of the timeline and the process, so if I get three thumbs down, we'll put it off to the side and we won't move forward with it. If I get three, at least three thumbs up, we'll submit it and then we'll work on it as we, as it comes back. But to Dave's point, you know, this could be two to three weeks of time before we hear back anything from the state. Um, and, and, you know, we, we may only have till December to help people, we may have longer. So this is, this was really, I, we got a lot further in the weeds than we ever thought we were gonna do. This was a poll check on, but not the council feels comfortable. Um, putting business grants out there, using the CARES funding, um, leaving it to the, uh, staff and others to. Uh, cross the Ts and dot the Is and allocate the time that's there. You know, and so that's, I know that's a tough thing, maybe you don't feel comfortable making a thumbs up or thumbs down on even submitting, but submitting doesn't require spending. It, it just gives us the authorization to look at it, so. That's kind of where I am. If, if I don't have three people saying that they're, they at least want to move it forward, then I don't want to invest more staff time, even that, even than what we've done. In the conversation, so that's kind of where I would ask is. At, at least the general, submit it for consideration and Dave can come back when we get more information and further clarification and guidance.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman Pro.
In that vein, if it's submitted to the state and they say, yep, you're good to go. Uh, is that, then it's just approved and, and we get a letter saying it's approved, or is there another step to that process?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pro, there's more steps to the process. The state would acknowledge to the city that it's approved, but then. It's really, to the mayor's point, on us to decide when to enact it, when to open it up, uh, so.
Then I'm a thumbs up.
Okay, well, as, uh, Councilman Burke said, in the interest of time, we'll move off of this topic, we'll at least submit it. We'll take the comments here, we'll submit it through, to get the state's feedback on it, and Mr. Miles can come back in a week or two. Or three, with further comments, but if you do have specific questions or comments or things you'd like to see. Uh, reach directly out to him and provide that to him.
Mr. Mayor, I do, I do believe that, uh, that, that we would need to have, like, one more discussion and, and a thumbs up or thumbs down vote in regard to. Final confirmation. There's a lot of open-ended questions that I don't think are fully answered, so. But I think there's enough there that we can, I think, at least I'm comfortable with going forward.
Mayor and Council, thank you for your time. I know it took, took a bit and I know you've got more to go, so thank you, appreciate the feedback.
All right, with that, um, our next item on the agenda, item number sixteen is from our community development department. Um, I will turn this over, is this gonna be? Brian, Miranda?
Mr. Mayor, it's Caleb.
Or Caleb, I, I didn't see your name there, so turn this over to Caleb.
Just, just real briefly, Edinson Batista is the project manager at ACHD, it looks like he's been admitted and I am. Uh, serving on the project team representing the city, but Edinson is gonna provide you the update this afternoon.
Thank you, Caleb. Uh, good, good evening, Mayor, I'm Samus and Councilmember, I will share my screen, uh, just now. And hopefully, prepare a presentation for all of you, so. Can everyone see my screen? Great, sounds good, so, uh. Good evening, uh, my name is Edinson Batista, ACHD Senior Transportation Planner. In today's meeting, I wanted to present an update regarding the North Meridian Neighborhood Bike and Pedestrian Plan. And the public outreach done through this process. In this slide, uh, I'm presenting the project objectives, which includes, uh, the mapping of biking and walking destinations. Identification of transit biking and walking facilities. The development of a, of a user-friendly neighborhood plan. Clearly defined, prioritize and rank, uh, the, the identified projects. And identify existing gaps in sidewalk and bicycle network. As a reminder, this is the north, the planning area for the North Meridian Neighborhood Bike and Ped Plan. And it mainly covers North Meri- uh, Mary, the, the city of Meridian, north of I eighty-four. As part of the neighborhood plan, public outreach effort, ACHD staff and the consultant worked with five and six grade classrooms. From the, from the River Valley Elementary School to obtain feedback from local kids about their communities. Maps of the planning area were presented to the students and discussions and discussed with them about walking and biking in their communities. We asked the kids what makes them feel safe and challenges when walking and biking. Some of the comments received regarding the difficulty of walking and biking included vehicle speed, lack of lighting. Vehicles inside the bike lanes and lack of crossings. In response to COVID nineteen, the public outreach has, has been focused in the development of online tools. That allows the public to provide feedback pertaining to planning areas. In April, ACHD released a public interactive comment map. That allowed the public to share their thoughts on the transportation needs and issues presenting in their communities. Through this effort, North Meridian received twenty-eight comments. Using the public feedback, as well as the Roadways to Bike Way Master Plan. And the, and through data analysis, a draft project list was prepared, was prepared for each of the, for this neighborhood area. In July, we released an online open house to present that this, to the public, the draft project list. And to request further people, and further public feedback regarding the planning area. The content of this second public outreach included the project under consideration, the project schedule. The inputs received in April and a survey. Through this effort, North Meridian received fifty-three comments with a total of eighty-one comments for the entire public outreach effort. As part of this work session, in your packet, you will find the draft project list for the North Meridian Neighborhood Plan. A total of eighty-eight projects were identified for the, for this planning area. From those eighty-eight projects, fifty-sevenths are bike, bike with projects, identify locations like. The Usted Quarter or Ten Mile Quarter, and also bike with projects like the Linder Meridian Bike Way. Just to mention a few. Eighteen sidewalk projects that were, that were mainly located at the west end of the planning area. And thirteen projects at locations like Meridian and Settler Park, McMillan Road and Summit Way. And Cherry Lane and Meridian, in, 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 in the Meridian Library area. As next steps, uh, through the month of August, we're, we're working with the, with the consultant, the project in the prioritization of. The project of the projects under consideration and the development of the draft plan. On September, uh, September ninth, we're planning to go inform the commission. Uh, to present the draft plan and as part of it, release it to the public. Uh, ahead of the adoption hearing, which will take place on September twenty-third. With this, I conclude my presentation and I send for any question.
Thank you, Edinson. Council, any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your time, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Council, we don't have an executive session, so if it's all right, we'll try to go till five forty-five. If we're getting this next two and give a break before the next meeting, if we have to move something on, we'll do that. Um, so with that, we'll move on to items, uh, seventeen under Department Commission reports. Uh, Community Development Eagle Road Amity to Victory Design Update, and I will turn this over to Caleb and Brian.
So again, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. I'm just gonna do a very quick introduction or refresh. Last week, as, uh, we discussed the ACHD's draft integrated five-year work plan. Uh, there was a little bit of dialogue on the project that Brian's gonna run through with you very briefly, he's been the. Um, city representative on that project team at ACHD, so he's just gonna, uh, show you some of those design elements. Um, get into a little bit more of the detail, uh, as we follow up on the conversation last week on. Um, again, some of the design elements that ACHD currently has for the project, so with that, I'm gonna pass the mic to Brian.
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of, uh, council, I'm gonna give you a abbreviated version of this presentation. Um, as Caleb mentioned, I'm here to speak to you about the, uh, Eagle Victory Overland, Ro- Overland Roadway Widening Project. Existing roadway is two lanes, sometimes with a center turn lane and numerous bike and pedestrian gaps. Expansion project is a five-lane roadway, including center turn lane, with multi sidewalks on both sides of the street. ACHD is accommodating a pathway crossing at the Ten Mile, uh, Peter Creek. And there are two roundabouts for this project, one at Zaldea and one at Amity. There is also an existing, uh, single lane roundabout at Amity, which is to be, be rebuilt as a double lane roundabout with a bypass lane. Generally, the multi pathways are ten feet, though adjacent to county parcels, they will be eight feet. The project began in two thousand eighteen and included two public open houses and online comment periods. Since then, ACHD has, um, completed, uh, largely completed design and been acquiring right away. This is largely finished with the project on a ninety-day bid list and construction is slated for FY two thousand twenty-one. This is a lopsided exhibit here, schematic, is a look at the new dual-lane roundabout at Eagle and Emily. Uh, and probably deserves some backstory. North is at the top. Uh, recently, ACHD expanded projects include this intersection, which is previously noted, uh, is an existing roundabout. The Friends Plaza Project, approved by the city in two thousand seventeen. And located on the northwest corner of the Eagle and Amity intersection, had originally agreed to complete expansion of a single lane roundabout into a dual lane configuration. However, uh, this development hasn't moved forward and ACHD determined they would need to complete the intersection to redeem the benefits of the project to the north. The complexity of its design and in relation to con- concept designs of the adjacent impoundments may necess- necessitate. Divisions either to adjacent property access or to the intersection design. Uh, staff has had some concerns with this, the, the project is, uh, um. Fairly complicated, as you can see, it is a dual-lane roundabout, which is, uh, relatively near the multiple Meridian. And then the bypass lane you see is on the northwest corner. On the west side of this project, you have three lanes merging into one. That section of Amity is not, uh, in ACHD's integrated five-year work plan. And ACHD has been prioritizing, uh, improvements to Lake Kewall, which is a mobility corridor, one mile to the south. I guess with that and given time constraints, I'll just, um. Maybe briefly mention, there's a Z crossing on here, if you're not familiar with that, there's two roundabouts. There's multi pathways, which have had some concerns, and then there is this roundabout here, which is, uh, definitely near to our area. And with that, I would stand for any questions or go into more detail on the items you may want to discuss.
Brian, just because I know it's come up, but the Transportation Commission, do you have any slides to show the. Uh, at least the roundabout at Zaldea and the proposed stacking pedestrian crossing facility?
So, yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the, uh, roundabout at Zaldea. Um, this is a two-lane roundabout, north, south, so on Eagle Road, uh, top of the image is north. And then east-west on Zaldea, it is a single lane roundabout, so. Uh, the inside lane of the roundabout, you can go round and round, if that suits your fancy, and the outside of lanes, you have to either turn right or go straight through. The pedestrian crossings that were of interest, uh, look like this. So at the local streets, the ACHD has moved the crossings for those pathways, uh, back behind. Uh, what would be, uh, typically typical distance for a single, uh, stacking vehicle, and then, um. Oh yeah, and it speaks for itself. Staff have had co- uh, concerns with this as well, we have, uh, raised them with this project, we also discussed them previously with council. Staff have had concerns with this as well. We have raised them with this project. We also discussed them previously with council on the Lotus Grove project, uh, from Victory to Amity, or from Victory to Overland. But ACHD revised the designs of that and removed the multi-use pathways from that project. So this is the only location proposing Meridian right now.
Mr. Mayor. Sorry, Brian.
Yes, Caleb.
And just to, to follow up on that, uh, we did discuss both of those topics at the Transportation Commission earlier this month. Uh, the Transportation Commission did share concerns about this design for the crossings of the local roadways there and did request that council send a letter to ACHD requesting them to relook at the design of these, uh, these crossings. We have not sent that letter yet. We wanted to see if there's anything else that you wanted to talk about. In, if, if we do send a letter to ACHD, but that was the recommendation of the Transportation Commission that, that we request ACHD relook at this design.
Mr. Mayor, I have updated the screen to show some of the concerns of that multi crossing by the Transportation Commission and by staff.
All right, so, okay, Brian, several people want to weigh in right here. I couldn't, is it, was it Jessica? Councilman Perrow?
Yeah, I didn't want to weigh in. I just, just wondering if Brian could email us, um, a copy of this slideshow. Um, I, it doesn't sound like there's any decision to make right now. We're just getting information, so would that be possible to have this email to us?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilman Perrow, I, I can certainly email that to you. I, I I've abbreviated this slide or this presentation, so I should note, this project, uh, is rapidly nearing can, uh, start, so this portion of Eagle Road has been designed for some time. They have, uh, completed or largely completed the right-of-way acquisition. It is on the ACHD's ninety-day bid list, uh, and they are planning for construction in FY twenty-one. So I can certainly send it to you, but I don't know how much time council will have to weigh in on this if they, if they choose to.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Um, it just seems like with a lot of these projects, we have significant concerns and that our significant concerns are not heard, so I guess just wanted to cut down to it. Um, if we should send a letter and we think it would be helpful to improve either of these projects, I'm okay with that. You know, whatever improves the, the pedestrian experience, like these charts to me are like mind-boggling, because I don't, I just don't see how they work. Um, I had a different question, which is I saw in this memo nine thousand dollars to pay for mulch. That feels like a lot for mulch, so I, that's just a different, different topic for a different day, but maybe we could take a look at that. Uh, that seems like a lot. I'll, uh, a- any letters that would improve these, I'm, I'm happy to get on board with.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Kavanagh.
Yeah, I'm in concurrence with Councilman Schrader. My only hesitation is I think staff have done an excellent job of communicating some of their concern about specifically uh, the crossing. I think previous council has done the same. I am not a traffic engineer, but the common citizen to me, when I look at this, it, it, it's almost a little frightening. So I'm happy to send another letter. I just, I'm, maybe I'm too cynical to think that it's going to have a lot of impact, again, specifically taking into the time of which case I would just be moving forward on this project. If we think it's helpful, let's do it.
Yeah, and, and just for the, you know, we, we are trying to get a joint meeting set up with ACHD and this potentially could be a topic. And I think the, the, the general question for council is, you know, to what level is this a topic that you would want to engage ACHD on? Is it the overall concept of a roundabout at Eagle and Amity and the related roundabouts at Zaldea and, help me with the other one, Brian?
Toconic.
Amity and then another one planned at Toconic to the south.
It's Toconic. Or is there something more specific that there are issues with? And just a, I, I think I may have mentioned this last week, but that there is a light that's being proposed at the half-mile on Amity to the east where uh, you have the hill and a, and a future high school site. So my conversation more recently has been, why are we putting a roundabout with a, with a bypass lane in the middle of three lights, putting three lanes into one road, potentially limiting access to uh, commercial on that corner? Um, it, there seems to be a whole host of reasons why I personally am not in favor of having, now, I don't care if ACHD's ready to bid, they should not build this in my personal opinion. But I'm, I'm not going to crusade against a roundabout because sometimes my, my comments get misconstrued. But I don't think this is a place where this roundabout should be built. But this is one person's opinion and, and before we, I don't want to over go on a letter or a topic if the rest of council has said this decision is passed and we need to move on and just work on making this one safer.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Um, I've had similar conversations, um, with property owners in the area and, um, with, with you, with other council members regarding the, specifically whether there should be a roundabout or a light at Eagle and, and Amity. I have a lot of concerns about there being a roundabout there for pedestrian safety, safety, um, future business owners, et cetera. Not to go into too much detail, but I, I, I believe I think that we should have a conversation about all three, um, but, but only to the extent that we think we can, we can, um, have an effect on ACHD's plans. And I don't know how we measure that.
And Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavanagh.
To that point, I think that should be the bigger topic with, with ACHD, not about, I mean, I think we should, we can talk about the, this specific project, but what do they need from the city to change their mind? Um, if, if we've, if we have staff that voice concerns, if we have elected representatives that voice concerns, and they still move, you know, full speed ahead, why ask us in the first place?
Fair enough.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Whether it's a letter or we expedite a meeting with, uh, ACHD, whichever one is going to be, uh, most prudent, I believe that that's what we should do. I, um, setting aside the design issue, this, this is public safety issue and that's our number one concern here, especially those crosswalks that go behind park, you know, not park cars, but stop cars. Um, you can't see those people if it's, if it's at um, in the morning or if it's at night and it's getting a little bit dark. Um, I know that there was a little boy that was killed, uh, over there recently, just right near where this is going to be. It's possible, and ACHD can't say that it is. It's happened and it's going to happen. These are, these are serious, um, safety concerns for this, for, for, for this area of Meridian, so they need to be addressed as soon as possible.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
To that end, um, West Ada owns property on the north side of where that light will potentially go at the half-mile. And so we're, if there's gonna be a middle school potentially in that location, I have even greater concerns about the design of that roundabout at Eagle and Amity. That's, that was what spurred the original, my original interest and concern in that is if, if we now add a school in addition to commercial property that's been approved and two different corners, um, absolutely, we should have that conversation with them as soon as possible.
Okay. If I see here no objections, I do have a, a meeting with the commission president on Thursday, where quite frankly, I'm gonna ask Councilman Kavanagh's question point, very pointedly. You know, what does it take to get ACHD to actually listen to the city's feedback when we have grave concerns on things?
And Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
It's, it's late for dinnertime, and so I'm probably a little more salty. That came across me a little more salty than I intended. I appreciate the collaborative relationship that we've had with the highway. I just think that we've seen kind of time and time again that we've voiced concern, we've asked for different approach and it hasn't necessarily been responded to.
Uh, and I will keep your name out of it.
Well, if only they can hear it on, on more.
I, I think Justin's on the call anyways, so, um, from that perspective. So with that, we'll, we'll end there. Miranda, I'm sorry, we're not gonna get to you, but we'll try to add it on to the next one. If there's a problem with that, please communicate that to Caleb and Caleb can let us know if we need to bring her back next week instead of, uh, tonight before we do start our six o'clock meeting. So with that, council, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion on the motion? If Donald's favor is seen by by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? And we are adjourned.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Burr.
What do we, are, are we gonna try to put, uh, item eighteen at six or is that not possible because that's, uh, been noticed? Or does it have to be next week?
I think it can go on, but I'll, the, ask Mr. Neri.
Okay. Right, just take a look at that. We'll, we'll discuss in a minute.
Okay. Okay. Hello, Justin, how are you?
I'm doing well. How are you, Mayor?
Doing all right.
Good.
Having a little fun from home this evening.
Yeah. Is the whole council at home, or?
No, we've got three there in the chambers, Councilman Borton, Councilman Hoglin, and it's just two. And, okay. And then one other one, I think, in City Hall. From an undisclosed location.
He's in the city council bunker right now.
I'm here.
Yeah, in case something happens, you gotta have one protected.
Absolutely. Lou could be the courageous guy.
He's good.
Does look a little like Keeper Sutherland, if we're gonna get real about it, so.
Thanks.
Give it just one more, one more minute. Okay. Mister or Madam Clerk, are we ready to go?
Mister Clerk, tonight, and we are ready, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, with that, I will call this meeting to other, for the record, it is August twenty-fifth at six oh two PM. We will begin tonight's meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton? Councilman Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow?
Here.
Councilwoman Strater?
Here.
Councilman Hoglin?
Here.
Councilman Vern?
Here.
Mayor Simison?
Yeah. Our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where riches stand.
Next is our community invocation, which tonight will be led by Justin Jordan with Real Act Ministries. If you all would join us in the community invocation, or take this as a moment of reflection for yourself personally. Justin, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Lord, we come before you and thank you that we are gathered here tonight to pray for counsel for our government, for our community, Lord. I pray, Lord, that as the council meets and goes through the agenda, Lord, that as they have to make decisions and decisions for what's best for our community, I pray you give them a heart of listening, heart to learn, to understand, and to make a judgment, Lord, and that that judgment would be aligned with what's best for Meridian, and that it would extend grace and love to our community, and that it would continue to build upon the great values that already drive the city of Meridian, Lord. We ask for your blessing in this community. We ask for continued just expansion of of the amazing qualities of you, and that it would be rooted in your goodness and your grace, and be rooted in the image of your Son, Lord. We love you, and we praise you for your goodness in our community. We pray this in your Son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate you being here this evening.
Pastor Justin, good to see you, buddy.
Thank you. Have a great night, you guys.
Thank you.
Counsel, our next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I'm looking at the, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Back on the motion.
I have a motion of second to adopt the agenda as published in discussion on the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Do we need to move the community development or Miranda's presentation to this agenda?
We're gonna do it next week.
Great.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? If not, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it. Mister Clerk, do we have anyone signed up under the public forum?
Mister Mayor, not for a topic we can discuss this evening.
Okay. Then with that, we will move on to our first action item, which is a public hearing for City of Meridian proposed solid waste fees. I will open this public hearing with comments from Tom. I think Tom is gonna be presenting, and he'll probably turn it over to Rochelle, but we'll listen with comments from Tom Odi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, you're going to be hearing from Republic Services on their proposed rate agreement for fiscal year twenty-one. Staff and SWAC have already reviewed the numbers. They've been approved by SWAC and recommended to council with a due pass. SWAC Chairman Corey is here this evening for any additional questions, and I will be happy to stand for questions as well. Rodney, I believe, will be presenting some of the numbers from Republic, so if you'd like, I'd turn it over to him.
Thank you, Tom. Rodney? Rodney, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Just thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rodney Remling, Finance Manager, Republic Services, one 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 zero one, West Executive Drive, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven one three. Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, as you know, the solid waste rates are subject to an adjustment annually, as lined out in the contract in section twenty-one. That increase is, is subject to a number of factors. The first one being the change in Consumer Price Index that's published by the Department of Labor. All non-disposal costs are allowed a price increase of ninety percent of the change in that index, and the index change today at ninety percent is two point six four percent. Now comparing that to our, our cost increase, the, the largest line item in our expense is labor, and year over year, we've seen just over a seven percent increase in labor costs. And this is due primarily to the growth and demand for skilled labor in the valley. And so we've had to increase our wages significantly more than we typically do in a normal year to retain qualified labor to be on the streets, driving the equipment and handling the waste. So the CPI is significantly less than our largest labor, or our largest expense item, which is labor. With that, I'd like to walk through some of the cost components or the revenue components that we're asking for a change for. I would note that the household hazardous waste has been a component of the rate for a number of years. That's currently assessed at eighteen cents per household, and we're not requesting a change to that. This year, that's running very close to the actual costs. Life to date, Republic has spent four thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven more dollars to process that than we've collected from residents, but that does not warrant a change in the rate, and we're just asking to leave it where it is. And rolling forward in the future years, it would be either go up or down based on the cost of that service. Second to that is the recycling service charge. We're asking for a ten cent increase per residential household on that, and the reason for that is, over the last twelve months, Republic Services has sustained a loss of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars in that line of business. So we need the additional dime to cover the bulk of that cost. And I would note that it doesn't completely cover our loss this year, but it is closing the gap on that, and we're trying to, you know, ease that into, into the rate. And given some of the additional increases, you know, we've agreed to, with staff, to leave that at a dime. Republic Services has serviced this contract for the last eight years, starting in April of twenty-twelve, and disposal has not seen an increase in that timeframe. This current year, starting October one, Ada County is going from a volume-based or per yard-based disposal rate to a per ton rate. You might hear that some rates are going down, others are going up. The transfer station rates are going up, and the Meridian City waste is tied to the Meridian Transfer Station. Residential households dispose of about one ton of waste annually, and that's on an average basis. So a ninety-five gallon cart would dispose of a little bit more, and the smaller cart sizes would dispose of a little bit less, but on average, about a ton per resident per year. That equates to seven dollars and forty cents from twenty-two dollars to twenty-nine dollars is the increase in the transfer station, which equates per household with about seven dollars and forty cents. Now that does include the franchise fee that Meridian City collects on every dime that's billed. So we've taken that disposal increase, and we've added the franchise fee with that. That is not the case with CPI. The Meridian franchise fee comes out of the CPI, so when we say we get two point six four percent, we actually get a little bit less than that because Meridian gets a piece of it. In this case, on disposal, it's, it's seven dollars and forty cents, and that's inclusive of the franchise fee. The other thing that Republic strives to do is to partner with our municipal and so the volumetric excise tax credit, which is, as a result, is a federal credit for utilizing alternative fuels. So in the city of Meridian, we utilize compressed natural gas trucks. We track that fuel usage by contract, and, and with the credit that we receive from the federal government for the use of that fuel, Republic Services remitted a check during last year for sixty-one thousand sixty-seven dollars. And that was a retroactive decision that, that the president signed on December of last year that was retroactive twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, so it effectively represents two years. Staff wanted to reduce the increase on residents by giving that sixty-one thousand back through the rates to the residents. So that, that is a reduction in the rate of fourteen cents. So that's another layer of this, so it's in favor. It's getting it back to the residents who are using, utilizing that fuel. So in total, the residential rate impact is a dollar eight. And I'd like to break that out. We've already talked about the components, but talk about it from, from the aspect of where, where the dollar eight actually goes. So as we stated, the franchise fee is gonna change, so the franchise fee, or the amount that Meridian City will receive is seven cents of the dollar eight. Seventy-six cents goes to the landfill for disposal. The increase at the transfer station from twenty-two dollars to twenty-nine cents, that's seventy-six cents per month going to, going to the landfill. And then the last part of that is a net of twenty-five cents that Republic Services receives for, for our services. So in all, on an average year, it's a little bit less on our part, but when you factor, but it equals out when you factor in, add back in the sixty-one thousand. So it's a pretty normal rate increase from a CPI perspective. It's a little bit behind our increase in costs. And then, as we stated, Republic Services is getting a mere quarter. Um, and then, as we stated, Republic Services is getting a mere quarter of the of the dollar eight. Any questions?
Thank you, Rodney. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is Brad.
Uh, CouncilHogland.
Real quick, I just wanted to ask Rodney about what the outlook is for recycled, return on recycled materials. It's a it's a world market, I understand that. What's the outlook right now?
Right, so the market has actually improved um over the last over the last several months uh with the with COVID impacting. A lot of cardboards hit the market and there seems to be an increase in demand uh for commodities. So certain commodity prices are are improving, uh, but those are also being offset by cost of transportation and processing and all that. So the reason we're asking for an increase this year is because we've never really caught up on our full cost. So we're, as I mentioned in in the presentation, we're closing the gap on that. Last year, we sustained a loss of a hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand and change and and this moves to close that. So we won't be whole, but you know, we're doing our best to to be fair and equitable uh across the valley and and as we ask for these increases and not be gouging uh any way at all, just just to cover our costs and and to move closer to that each year.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Council Administrator.
Maybe just for some context for my fellow council members, um as sort of sitting as a ex officio on the SWAC. Um, so a few years ago, China started their Operation Green Sword, which affected global commodity prices for recyclable materials and it caused the cost for uh recycling to go way up compared to the amount that could be recovered in commodity prices. And so what you have here is basically a catch-up from that. And then in addition to that, the landfill fees went up, which impacted us quite a bit um because we use the transfer stations and now to get the benefit from sort of compressing those materials. So just some context as we're sort of looking at this.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilpro.
Forgive my ignorance in this, as a a new council member and and a lot to learn. Um, a few years back, we were paying really significantly high fuel prices and they've come down and and stabilized kind of in that low um two-dollar, two-and-a-half-dollar range. I don't know if that, if you pay market fuel prices or if you have a contract for less than that, but I'm curious how how that's affected um the cost to Republic Services and if it's if it's offset some of these additional costs that Council Administrator just mentioned.
Yes, Councilwoman, the the fuel cost has been fairly stable, as you've seen. We've had some reduction in fuel costs at the at the pump and we do have large contracts. We do uh leverage the the scale of our business uh to purchase fuel. Um, in total, in the in this local market, it's pretty close uh to what you see at the pump, sometimes some variance up or down. Uh, back when fuel was around four dollars a ton, that was, or excuse me, four dollars a gallon. That was, if I recall correctly, before twenty-twelve when we acquired the contract. Uh, some municipalities did a short gap of covering that high cost uh with a recovery fee that went away when costs came back down. So we've seen normal sort of changes in fuel. Um, but as I said, the 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 real driving factor for us as far as comparison to the change in CPI i- is the labor. I would also add that capital costs or costs of trucks um is going up at about seven percent per year. Uh, we're paying about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars per year for a truck now. Um, and so those those costs are also buried in here as well. So um while we do have some some areas which may not be reaching the two-point-six-four percent, we certainly have some areas that are significantly over.
Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions? For Rodney or staff at this time, more? Okay, thank you, Rodney. This is a public hearing. Uh, Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody sign up to testify on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we had nobody sign up to testify.
Okay. Um, well, then we will go to our other location. If there's anybody in the room who would like to testify on this item, if you would like to come forward to the podium now and say your name and address for the record, or if there's anybody who's in the Zoom meeting who would like to provide testimony, you can do so by using the raise your hand feature at the bottom of the screen and we will bring you in and recognize you for three minutes. Seeing no one who wishes to testify on this item. Counsel, do you have any further questions, comments? Or is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Council Administrator.
Uh, I move that we close the public hearing on the recycling uh process fee amendment and proposed all waste fees in.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion second to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Well, thank Rodney for for being here tonight. I know we, as a council, always take any proposal that increases the costs on our rate payers seriously and Rodney's uh discussion or presentation tonight in conjunction to the previous uh information provided memo we received from the day gives me greater in in being supportive of this motion.
Any further comments on closing the public hearing? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? The ayes have it. Mr. Nary, I assume you are looking for a direction to prepare a resolution to come back?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, yes, and then also action on the recycle processing amendment after that.
I'm sorry, which?
So yes, correct, Mr. Mayor, we do want direction to bring a resolution back to approve the fees that have been noticed. And then secondarily, on the recycle processing fee amendment. So that is a agreement between the city and Republic Services to amend our agreement to include that. To give some context to the newer council members, a couple of years ago, we added added this this fee on uh because prior to that, uh, all the recycle processing cost was handled, was taken care of by Republic. Based on the change in the commodity prices worldwide, the city agreed two years ago to include an additional fee for the processing, but wanted, the council direction at the time was annually, they would like to reevaluate that and see if the market has changed, see if the status has changed. And that's why we have a separate amendment for that specific fee versus all the other fees. So that's why that amendment's on there for your approval tonight as well.
Am I missing the agenda with the amendment on it or?
Um, it it is in the packet.
Okay, in the packet, not on the not on the agenda itself.
Mr. Mayor.
CouncilmanCavanagh.
I I do think it is a little confusing if we have the the fee schedule as as one item attached, number one, and that the recycling amendment is a second piece of the package. So I think from from a agenda perspective, it's listed as one item, but there's two separate individual pieces that are.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Administrator.
So maybe I'll try to make a motion and I don't know if it's gonna cover those things or not. Um, so I move that we direct the city to prepare uh a resolution as discussed by Mr. Nary outlining the um fee schedule that we received. And then I also move that we approve the sorry, I lost you there, FY twenty-twenty-one amendment to the franchise agreement recycling process fee.
So here, did you get what you needed? Is there a second to that motion?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion a second. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Rodney and Tom for being here this evening and Mr. Corey for your continued uh dedication to this topic in the city. With that, we'll move to item number two on the agenda, the request for preapproval to apply for beer and wine license. Um, and I will turn this over to Mr. Nary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So what you have before you is a request from Tango's Empanadas and Grill, uh, which is located on uh in Cherry Plaza on on Fairview. Here, they are within three hundred feet of a church or school. Uh, there is a church located in Cherry Plaza. So the standard procedure that's required by the state of Idaho for the Alcohol Beverage Control Unit to issue any type of liquor license or beer and wine license is that the business has to come to the city council prior to application to see if there are any concerns that the council has in considering this. So you're not approving the license tonight, you're simply giving them the red light or the green light to apply for it. We did, based on prior council actions, did notify the church that this was being sought. Um, they expressed no concern about it particularly, but we haven't received that in writing. Again, the code doesn't really grant authority to the adjoining business or school or church to um necessarily veto the the request. They simply are, we simply chose to inform them. The state code doesn't even require that, but the city has chosen to inform the adjoining neighbors that this is uh being requested. But all they're seeking tonight from Tango's is the council's um authorization to go ahead and move forward with the process. You will have it come back in front of you for final approval if it gets through the state and the county process.
Thank you, Mr. Nary. Uh, counsel, any questions for Mr. Nary? Okay, and I assume you don't need a motion to allow them to do this, or do you?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yeah, the state does look for that, so they're gonna look for that. Uh, we would then send them the minutes showing that we did get a direction with a motion.
Okay.
But voice vote's fine for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Uh, as to item two, I move that we uh approve the request for preapproval of the beer and wine license made by Tango's Empanadas and Grill.
Second.
I have a motion second. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Okay, item number three is a request for reconsideration for Cedar Brook subdivision H twenty-two dash zero-one-two. Um, I will turn this over to Mr. Nary for comments.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So what you have before you tonight is a request for reconsideration for the Cedar Brook project, H twenty-two zero-zero-one-two. Um, in your packet is the request itself from um Ms. Nelson, uh, their their council. There's also a letter in there as well from or a memo from myself in regards to an issue regarding service of the um of the request. And then ultimately, you also have a second memo from Ms. Nelson uh outlining their position on the issue of service. So um in a in a request for reconsideration, the council um cannot take any testimony. You have to base your decision based on the written material that's presented to you. You can ask questions. If you have any clarifying questions you need answered in regards to either my memo, uh, Ms. Nelson's two memos, um, any other questions you have made for the clerk or the or the planners, but it is not a, it is not a public hearing, not a test, not public testimony. Your decision point tonight is either to approve the request for reconsideration and therefore granted a new hearing at a future date or to d- deny the request for reconsideration and and allow the rest of the legal process subsequently to continue um and not grant another hearing. Or third, you have authority under the statute to modify the decision if you think modification is necessary. So it's either approve, deny, or modify is the decision point for tonight. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Nary. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Nary? If, is there any further guidance or direction needed, discussion or a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Um, I guess as a as a preliminary matter, I think the issue that that was raised and and addressed in the memo with regards to service is one that if that's a preliminary issue, I think we should certainly accept the request for reconsider uh request for reconsideration, having been accepted by the city and I think we might have some internal um clarity we can do after the fact to make sure it's um easy to comply with, but I don't, I didn't see that the manner in which it was submitted is any reason to to not at least uh hear the matter today. I will address that at another at another time. Um, I didn't find, I, in in review of the request and the record and the findings, I didn't see that there was um in my mind, grounds that would that warrant reconsidering it. I think there's just a genuine difference of opinion in in the decision that was made, which I understand, but I couldn't come to a um come to a place where I thought reconsideration was appropriate. Uh, I thought council had laid out its its analysis, um, I think relatively clear, but I understand that there's a difference of opinion in in that decision, so um based on what's been presented, I'm not supportive of a reconsideration of of this implication in the council's prior decision.
Mr. Mayor, I concur with Councilman Borton's comment.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, Councilmember.
I would agree as well. Um, in 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 the motion, is there a, is there a is, Mr. Nary, do we need to describe the reason of the the denial or even approval, I guess, for that matter in in this reconsideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Nary.
Uh, Mr. Members of the council, Councilman Burt. Uh, again, the statute simply states that you have, i- if you've reviewed the material, as Councilmember Borton just said, and don't find the reasons request compelling enough to reconsider the matter or reconsider your decision, um, then you're, you would be moving to deny it. You don't have to lay out individual reasons or identify each individual point. Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, you don't have to do that.
All right. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I move that we denied the request for reconsideration for Cedar Brook subdivision H dash two-zero-two-zero dash zero-zero-one-two on the lines uh what Mr. Borton spoke earlier about, that the evidence to reconsider just wasn't compelling enough to uh to uh um to approve.
Second.
And a motion a second. Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing that, I'll of course call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Pro.
Aye.
Straater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes, the motion to reconsider is not approved. Um, and we will move on to item number four. Thank you, Mr. Nary, for your information on that. Item four is a public hearing for Teakwood subdivision, um, which is H twenty-two dash zero-zero-six. Um, I will go ahead and open this public hearing um with staff comment. Um, and I know in, turn it over to uh Joe for comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure the council can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Um, so yes, Teakwood Place, um, I'm not here to present that recommendation of denial from uh Planning and Zoning Commission. I, the applicant since that commission meeting has requested a remand back to the Planning and Zoning Commission with the hopes of presenting some new plans and open space exhibits that I should say respond to most of the concerns presented by the commission. So that is the action before you tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
There you go. Uh, Mr. or Councilmember.
Do we need to uh uh close the public hearing or can we just remand it without having to go that far?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Nary.
Yeah, once, yeah, you would close the public hearing once you're uh ready to deliberate and make a motion, so yes, you would do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Are we going to allow the, the applicant to say anything?
Is the applicant present, and would the applicant like to say anything? Not being in the room, I'm at a disadvantage.
Mr. Mayor, I believe the applicant, the applicant is on Zoom, one moment. And Mr. Lardy is joining us now.
Mr. Lardy, if you say your name and address for the record, if you'd like to make any comments regarding this recommend, this direction.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Dan Lardy, Levitt Associates Engineers, thirteen twenty-four First Street, South Nampa, Idaho. I'm joining you tonight in requesting for remand back to planning and zoning. Since our last hearing, it's been a long time, or kind of a hard run getting here, but we, we did finally, were able to sway the homeowner to, to see some things the way the commission would like to see them. And we have made some changes that are significant and that address the commission's concerns. And I believe that if you do remand us, we should be able to garner there at least a recommendation of approval to city council at that point in time. That's the reason why we're here, and I will stand for any questions.
Council, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
No questions, but I would like to say we really appreciate it when an applicant is willing to go through that process again and allow our commission to review and make recommendation to us. We know it, it adds extra time, but we really appreciate the applicant's commitment to bringing forward a great, a great application.
Thank you. Council, any further dialogue? Would you like me to ask if there's anyone from the public who'd like to testify? Okay, well, if this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the public who would like to testify on this item, either in the room or remotely? You can do so by raising your hand.
Mr. Sandy, sorry, Mr. Mayor, Sandy Blazer is here and did sign up on the public forum under Tequid subdivision. So if you would like to open it up, if he would still like to speak. Okay, he's coming to the podium.
Okay. You can say your name and address for the record, please.
Sandy Blazer, thirty-three seventy South Como Avenue, Meridian. The major objection all the homeowners had to this project wasn't the development itself, but the major problem was the, the fact that ACHD is recommending that all the traffic that this subdivision produces goes through our subdivision. And our, our position is we have about forty-one homes now. We're going to end up having almost seventy homes of traffic going through a very small subdivision. ACHD stated that they did not want the subdivision to have an outlet on Victory Road because it's a major arterial. But they did not give zoning and planning at that time any information on Locust Grove, which I don't know if the council's aware of, but Locust Grove is being widened from Victory North to Overland and a, I don't know what you call it, a roundabout is being placed there by ACHD, which will require us to, to, they're going to be requiring property to do it. Our feeling is generally that Locust Grove, because it's a north-south road, we are pulling all the new traffic and new development from Kuna all the way through to Overland. So we feel in that regards that their, ACHD's logic is a little flawed. We feel that Victory going east-west will be able to accommodate the, the small amount of homes that Tequid is, is developing. We also found out recently that just west of our development on Locust Grove, a developer is going to come to, come to planning with a development of duplexes and triplexes. So that will be loading onto Locust Grove also. And we're thinking about asking them to put a traffic light in there. So the basic feeling of the homeowners is, is that we feel if they could outlet to Victory, we would have really no major objections to the subdivision. And that's all the testimony I'd like to get at this point.
Thank you, council, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a quick question to comment that if we remand this back to plan, if we remand this back to planning and zoning, the process basically starts over and you're going to be engaged in that.
Yeah, we'll get engaged again.
Great, sure, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all. Thanks for coming.
Is there anybody who'd like to provide testimony on this item? If you're on Zoom, you can do so by hitting the raise your hand button at the bottom. Okay, council, seeing no one else who's walking to the podium from my seat of my house or raising their hand, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing, is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I move that we remand item number four, which is Tequid subdivision H dash two zero two zero dash zero zero six back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for further consideration.
I have a motion, a second, to remand item four to planning and zoning, is there any discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Borton wanted to talk.
Oh, he's got, he's gotta, gotta get his mask down quicker. Councilman Borton.
We're having trouble with the mics here now. I just think what Councilwoman Perrow said is a really important point. I just want to emphasize it. That direction from P and Z, when P and Z makes a denial recommendation, it really piques the interest of council and we look at that extremely, with a very sharp point. And, and we appreciate P and Z's hard work, and when they do that, an applicant who requests a remand and tries to address those concerns is so well served. So I know P and Z would appreciate that, and I know our council does. I'm glad you brought that up. All applicants need to be aware of that.
Council, any further questions on the motion or comments on the motion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borton.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. Thank you to the applicant for being here and being able to provide that feedback. Item number five is a public hearing for Paramount Point, H twenty twenty dash zero zero eight two. I'm going to open this public hearing with staff comments and turn this over to Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The project before you, as noted by Mr. Mayor, hold on, I always got to click in this. Now I have control. This Paramount Point, H dash twenty twenty dash zero zero eight two. It is a request for a short plat. The site consists of three point eight eight acres of land, zone CC, and is specifically located at six three five seven North Fox Runway, which is the southwest corner of Fox Runway and Chindon. The proposed short plat is for the creation of four commercial building lots and two common lots for ownership purposes. The northern common lot is being created along Chindon Boulevard for the purpose of dedicating additional right-of-way to ITD. The other common lot, which is Lot One, Block Two, at the very south edge of the subdivision, is being used as a buffer lot to the existing residential properties abutting the site to the south. There are existing sidewalks and landscaping along both Chindon and North Fox Runway adjacent to the subject site. These submitted landscape plans show adequate parking lot landscaping in compliance with the UDC. However, the landscape plans do not show, do not depict the landscape buffers to Chindon or North Fox Runway or the future Plaza Shops Drive that bisects the property. This should be corrected prior to receiving city engineer's signature. Submitted plans show that access to the site is proposed via driveway connections. One connection is proposed to North Fox Runway to the east, and the other driveway connection is shown near the south end of the site and connects to future West Plaza Shops Drive, which is an east-west road that bisects the property as part of the Linder Village project from the west. This future road is already approved, and the right-of-way is in the process of being dedicated outside of this process in conjunction with the Linder Village project approvals. The road dedications are currently in escrow, according to the applicant. Staff is recommending a condition of approval to ensure the road dedication is executed prior to receiving signature on this plat. ACHD has approved of the proposed driveway locations and the road dedication currently in process. The subject site has obtained CCC and design review approval for an urgent care facility in two thousand nineteen, and that building is proposed in the northwest corner of the site as seen on this screen. It is on the proposed Lot Two, Block One. In addition, an additional CCC and designer review approved this year for a new bank building located in the northeast corner of the site. The bank property is no longer a part of this property because a property boundary adjustment was completed to move the existing property lines and place the bank on its own property. That PBA was approved in two thousand nineteen in conjunction with the urgent care facility application and was recently filed with the county assessor. Compliance with the design standards, parking and landscaping were reviewed and approved with those applications. Future commercial building sites will also be reviewed through the CCC and design review application process for code compliance, and this includes cross-access for those parcels that do not have street frontage. The short plat does depict future reasons for this, and set instrument numbers should be on the plat prior to obtaining city engineer's signature. Upon deeper review of the existing entitlements and previous development agreements and the related modifications thereof, staff has determined that to be in compliance with the existing DAs, a new DA modification application is required. Staff has recommended a condition of approval for this, and the applicant has expressed understanding and agreement with this condition. There are no condition recommendations, as noted. Short plats go directly to you if they do not have associated applications. And staff does recommend approval of the request of short plat applications.
Mr. Mayor, question for Joe.
Joe, are you complete with your comments?
Yes, sorry, I apologize, I will stand for questions.
Okay, Councilman Holman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Joe. I just wanted to make sure that, so a new DA, modifications required for this new subdivision, and as part of that, staff is recommending a condition of approval to ensure the road dedication is executed prior to receiving signature on this plat. And was there anything else? I thought I heard something else, but I wasn't sure, just.
Mr. Councilman Hogan, members of the council. No, that is one of the conditions. I also noted another condition regarding revising the landscape plan to show the required buffers to Chindon, to the north-south street, which is North Fox Runway, and also the future West Plaza Shops Drive, which they are not showing buffers on. However, that southern lot will be a open space lot regardless and a common lot, so.
Okay, that was the one I was missing, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Council, any further questions for Joe? Okay, I see we have the applicant with us. I will turn this over to them for fifteen minutes. If you set off by sending your name and address to the record, we'd appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, just want to make sure you can hear me first. Perfect. For the record, my name is John Wardle, twenty-nine twenty-nine West Navigator, Meridian, Idaho, eight three six four two. With me is also Cody Daffer of our team. We will not take fifteen minutes, we'll be very quick. The, the application before you is, is pretty simple tonight. Maybe even slightly monumental or anticlimactic, maybe in the same sentence, being that this will be the very last plat that we do for the Paramount subdivision. This, this one has come forth at this time because of the Linder Village project next door, which is connecting to Fox Run through this project. We've been working with them as well as ACHD and ITD for probably eighteen months now on the dedication of right-of-way. As noted by Joe, the right-of-way has been, it's being held in escrow. We have already signed deeds for that. The, the item that's still remaining is for Linder Village to complete the transaction, which includes the replacement of landscaping and other things along the Paramount frontage. We're told that that should happen here shortly. But as Joe mentioned, this is a four-lot short plat before you this night. We, we are maintaining a landscape buffer to the south along Plaza Shops Drive, and we will update the landscape plans for staff prior to signature on the final plat to show all the required landscape buffers on this project. With that, I stand for any questions you might have regarding the short plat before you.
Thank you, John. Council, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Strater.
I'm a neighbor, as you know, John, so just curious. What kind of landscape buffer are we talking about? Is it something typical? I'm just not, it's usually something I feel like is ironed out by this point, so just give us.
Yep. So, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Strater, thank you for the question. What is a little different here? Because it is a commercial, commercial subdivision, the landscape buffers can be done in easement and not the typical common lot. We do have a hybrid in this case. We do have a common lot, which is along the southern edge. I believe we actually, and Joe, I don't have that in front of me, so maybe if you give me a second, I can go to a different drawing here. But I think the minimum of the landscape buffer on the southern edge is thirty feet. We wanted to maintain all of the existing landscaping that we had there as well as add the sidewalk within that area. It does get larger as we get out closer to Fox Run. As it relates to, yeah, it doesn't really give us a good number there, but as it relates to Chindon, there's a thirty-five-foot landscape buffer there, which will also have the ten-foot regional pathway in that landscape buffer there. And then on Fox Run, we have a twenty-foot landscape buffer that's required on that collector, which we will also depict. There, there will be, Councilman Strater, some significant changes to the way that Fox Run looks currently. As you know, there is a, a structure over the roadway. There's also an island there. In order to make the, the new road work for Linder Village, it will become a five-lane road. It, it's basically, as you see up here on Chindon, you kind of see the island in the middle and the width. That width will carry all the way down. So a five-lane road, at least with turn lanes and other things like that, can be accommodated at the intersection of Chindon and Fox Run. We will be replacing a significant amount of landscaping along that area there at Chindon. So the buffers are, will be the required buffers, and landscaping will be replaced once the road widening occurs.
Mr. Mayor, a quick follow-up.
Councilman Strater.
Is there a future plan or a look at some kind of a crosswalk here? Just given the road to Linder Village, and Linder Village is approved before I join council, so I don't have all the back history on that. But is there kind of a pedestrian plan?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Strater. So a, a couple of crosswalks or items here. So Plaza Shops Drive is the one that will connect with Fox Run. The plans do delineate curb cuts for pedestrian access that, you know, make it delineated where that will happen. I will go back and work with them on the striping of that, so it's very clear where that is. There obviously will be a, a stop bar, but I've seen them also add the crosswalk designation. So we'll go back and work with ACHD, with Linder Village and ITD. They're the ones who have those plans, but we'll, we'll see what we can do with that southern one. And then across Chindon or across Fox Run, when we come to Chindon, yes, most definitely, that will be a delineated crosswalk and will connect to the ten-foot. uh crosswalk and will connect the ten-foot regional pathway east to west across Fox Run.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions for the applicant? Okay. Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody of the public who would like to testify on this item? If you're in the room, go ahead and come up to the podium and say your name and address for the record or if you are on the Zoom call and would like to do so, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the Zoom platform. Seeing nobody who would like to provide testimony? Um, uh, would the applicant like to make any final comments?
Mr. Mayor, no, I do not have any other comments. Stand for any questions, we just request your approval, uh, council's consideration and approval of the Paramount Point short plat. Um, and we will comply with the noted conditions in the staff report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions or do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
I think that's Councilwoman Pro.
It is. I move that we close the public hearing for Paramount Point H two zero two zero 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 eight two.
I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Does the opposed no? Yeah, eyes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Since nobody's jumping to discuss, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion. Uh, I move that, um, after considering all staff applicant and public testimony, that we approve file number H two zero two zero 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 eight two as presented in the staff report for adhering date of August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty with no modifications.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Just a quick discussion from my end. Uh, I do appreciate the applicant trying to work and make sure that we're getting adequate, you know, pedestrian crossings, especially off Fox Run. It's going to become a real busy area. Um, Linder Village was done and put to bed a long time ago. I've seen some neighbors commenting about it and, you know, it, it is a done deal. Um, it, it improved over time. We're going to make the best of it and hopefully it'll be convenient, but just wanted to state that I do appreciate the, the folks looking out at Brighton to make sure we get that crosswalk and that that's going to be adequate for all the kids and teenagers and stuff going to the, to the Linder Village.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
Uh, just question for Councilwoman Schrader on her motion. Was that to include the conditions as presented by staff and agreed to by the applicant? And I, I didn't understand the last part of your, your motion there.
I think you made Councilwoman Pro, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Hogan, no, I had just stated with no modifications to staff, uh, staff recommendations, staff requirements. Brighton had indicated they agreed with everything that, that staff requires.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Pro. That no threw me for a minute, that no conditions, so I, I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
I think we, we have the motions in the second. So we are, we're in the debate on the motion. Um, is there further debate on the motion? If not, I'll ask the court to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden?
Aye.
Cavanagh?
Aye.
Pro?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Hogan?
Aye.
Burnt?
Yes.
All ayes, um, motion is great too and it passes. Next item on our agenda is item six of public hearing for Brundage Estates, T E C C twenty twenty dash zero zero one. Um, I will turn this hearing over to Sonya for staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The next application before you is a request for a preliminary plat time extension. This site consists of one hundred and thirty-six point six-three acres of land. It's owned R four and is located east of South Linder Road between West Victory and West Amity Roads. The comprehensive plan future land use map designations, there's two of them, is low-density residential, which is approximately sixty-four acres of the site and medium-density residential, which is seventy-three acres of the site. This property was annexed in two thousand fourteen with the Victory South application. A preliminary plat was later approved in two thousand sixteen, which was valid for two years. The preliminary plat consisted of three hundred and sixty-six buildable lots, twenty common lots and one other lot on one hundred and thirty-six point six-three acres of land. An administrative time extension was approved by the director in July of two thousand eighteen, which granted an additional two-year period of time until July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty, in which to obtain the city engineer's signature on a final plat. The reason for the time extension was due to incomplete sewer and water line extensions as well as upcoming improvements to Harris Street. No new conditions were placed on the application uh with the previous time extension. The applicant is now requesting a second two-year time extension on the preliminary plat in order to obtain the city engineer's signature on a final plat. The reason for this request is that the developer has been focusing on development of the adjacent uh Biltmore Estates, also known as Oakwood and Graycliff Estates subdivisions. Approval of the subject time extension will allow the applicant to obtain the city engineer's signature on a final plat and proceed with development of the property. If city council does not approve the requested time extension, the preliminary plat will expire and a new preliminary plat application will be required. Since the preliminary plat and previous time extension were approved, there have not been any code changes that would necessitate new conditions being placed on the subject time extension. The applicant is still required to comply with the previous conditions of approval for this project. No written testimony was submitted on this application and staff is recommending approval of a two-year time extension to expire on July twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonya. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Schrader.
Just, uh, I'm curious if you have to write these memos all the way from scratch on, on just these time extensions? Um, that's something we could take a look at. It seems really straightforward and I know you guys are super busy. Just wondering if we could streamline this stuff and, and, and have less memos.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilwoman Schrader, counsel, staff would definitely be in favor of that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader or is that Pro?
Pro.
Councilwoman Pro, thank you.
Uh, Sonya, uh, a question about the um the information that you put in the staff report that says the reason for the time extension was due to incomplete sewer and water line extensions. Was that, that the reason for the last extension or the reason for this extension?
The last extension, uh, Councilwoman Pro.
Okay, so those have been resolved at this point?
I, I believe the applicant um is on the Zoom call if you'd like to ask the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, excuse me, in person. I didn't see Cody back there.
Counsel, any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, I'll ask the applicant, who I understand now is in the room, if they'd like to come forward and be recognized for fifteen minutes.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for seeing us this evening. Um, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, LC Development. Um, should be pretty straightforward, short little presentation for you. I just have a, um, I'm here to kind of explain the backstory of why we haven't quite gotten to Brundage Estates yet. Um, I'm going to go ahead and read with your permission, I'm going to go ahead and read a, um, oh yes, I'm so sorry, uh, Cody Stoger, one-one-five-seven La Reata. I'm going to go ahead and read a statement from the applicant um as to explaining what's going on over there. Um, "When development was starting on my property in southwest Meridian, I entered into agreement with the city of Meridian to vacate a sewer district and a community appsite as well as sewage lagoons. As part of that agreement, I was asked to annex and provide preliminary plots for all two hundred and fifty acres of my property. At that time, the water and sewer was on the northeast side of the property, so my son and I started working there with the plans of moving southwest as our neighborhoods were being completed. We're committed to providing quality, sustainable growth in this community. As you know, the process of designing and getting a subdivision approved and developed takes a lot of time, resources and a significant investment. At this time, the preliminary plats on my property consist of over six hundred homes. And while that's a huge undertaking, we're committed to continuing our work towards Brundage Estates as part of the original master plan for my acreage." So with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Cody. Counsel, any questions for the applicant? Would you like the one that we just had regarding the, uh, Cody, I don't know if you remember the question that Councilwoman Pro asked staff just a few minutes ago regarding the location and reason?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
The question was whether the, the water and sewer, incomplete water and sewer line extensions and upcoming improvements to Harris Street that were the reasons for the extension in two thousand eighteen have been resolved or if that i- is still something that's being worked on.
Councilwoman Peralt and Mayor Simonsen, uh, those issues have been resolved. So we do have water and sewer connections and uh Harris Street is in, in the process of being, of being improved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, Cody. Uh, Mr. Clerk, did we have anyone sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, nobody has signed up.
Okay. Well, if there's anybody in the room that'd like to come forward and provide testimony on this item or if you're on the Zoom call, you can, and would like to testify, you can do so by using the raise your hand feature at the bottom. Seeing no one who'd like to provide testimony, um, I know Cody just sat down, but would the applicant like to make any final comments? I got, I'm getting a head shake from council, perfect. All right, then, uh, counsel, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Will we close the public hearing on item H twenty twenty? Uh, zero zero, zero one.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed no, the ayes have it. Um, discussion or a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
We'll make a motion a little clearer this time. I think the explanation from the applicant, I appreciate you being here and from staff as well, seems to justify this request for the extension, um, the two-year time extension. So I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we approve, um, the T E C C twenty twenty zero 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 one, um, Brundage Estates request for a two-year time extension on its preliminary plat.
Second.
Second the motion.
I have a motion in a second to approve the item. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, court called the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden?
Aye.
Cavanagh?
Aye.
Pro?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Hogan?
Aye.
Burnt?
Aye.
All ayes, motion passes. Uh, moving on, we will move on to item number seven, public hearing for Lending South, H twenty twenty dash zero zero five. And I will open this public hearing with staff comments. Turn it over to Sonya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The next applications before you are a request for a rezone and a preliminary plat. This site consists of two point two-seven acres of land. It's owned R four and is located at six-six-zero South Linder Road. This property was annexed in nineteen ninety-four without the requirement of a development agreement. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is medium-density residential, which calls for three to eight dwelling units per acre. A rezone of two point four-three acres of land from the R four to the R eight zoning district for the development of fourteen single-family uh residential dwelling units consisting of a mix of single-family detached and two-family duplex dwellings at a gross density of six point one-six units per acre consistent with the medium-density residential uh future land use map designation is proposed. A preliminary plat consisting of ten buildable lots, three common lots on two point two-seven acres of land in the proposed R eight zoning district. The minimum lot size proposed is four thousand four square feet with an average lot size of six thousand three hundred and five square feet. Duplexes are proposed adjacent to Linder Road with single-family detached homes on the eastern portion of the development. Access is proposed via the extension of an existing stub street, South Spoonbill Avenue from Joshua Street, at the northern boundary of the site, which ends in a cul-de-sac. Few common driveways are proposed off the cul-de-sac for access as shown on the plat. No access is proposed or approved via Linder Road. An emergency-only access exists off-site to the north via Linder Road. ACHD will allow a temporary construction entrance off of Linder during development of the subdivision, but not during home construction. Off-street parking is provided in accord with UDC standards. Two on-street parking spaces as well as four spaces at the ends of common driveways for a total of six spaces are available for guest parking in addition to the parking pads provided on each lot. The red dots signify the off-street parking shown on the plat there. Staff is concerned there may not be adequate on-street parking for guests and area for trash receptacles on trash day. However, the UDC does not have standards for on-street parking. The Kennedy lateral runs along the northern boundary of the site and has been piped. The pathway's master plan depicts a ten-foot wide multi-use pathway along the frontage of this site adjacent to Linder Road. However, because there is an existing sidewalk that is in good condition in this area, the Parks Department is not requiring it to be reconstructed and is only requiring an easement for a future pathway. A twenty-five-foot wide landscape street buffer is required along Linder Road. Because this site is below five acres in size, the qualified open space and site amenity standards in the UDC do not apply. An open space exhibit was submitted that depicts point three-seven of an acre of common open space consisting of the street buffer along Linder Road and the area along the northern boundary where the Kennedy lateral lies. No amenities are proposed. Rod iron fencing is proposed to be constructed at the back edge of the street buffer along Linder Road and along the Kennedy lateral easement. Concept building elevations were submitted for the homes proposed in this development as shown. Single-family detached homes are a single-story in height with stucco finish and stone veneer accents. Duplexes are two stories in height with a mix of vertical and horizontal siding. The duplex structures are required to comply with the design standards in the Architectural Standards Manual. At the first hearing before the commission, there were two hearings. So the commission uh directed the applicant to modify the layout of the plat to improve parking and internal circulation and revise the eastern lots to more of an R four size. The applicant came back with a revised plat with two fewer buildable lots and flag lots instead of one um of the common driveways, but the commission, um, nor staff nor the applicant was in favor of this design. Therefore, the applicant wishes to go forward with the original uh layout as shown. The commission recommended denial of this application. And I'll go through a summary of the commission public hearing. Josh Beach saw two landserving, the applicant's representative testified in favor, as did Jim Jewett, the applicant. No one testified in opposition. Uh, Jeanette Ackerman and Anthony Baggio uh commented on the application. Written testimony was received from Chris and Candace Johnson, Jeff Bolan, Kenneth Scott Grapperton, Josh Beach, the applicant's representative. Key issues of public testimony are as follows. Um, request for Joshua Street to extend to the west to Linder Road as a permanent access instead of emergency only. And, or at the very least, that construction traffic is allowed to use this access for development of the subdivision. And that a no outlet sign be installed on South Tiley Way where it intersects Waltman Drive to notify drivers the street dead ends to prevent unnecessary traffic. Mr. Grapperton expressed concern pertaining to the continued provision of irrigation water to his property, which currently runs through the northern side of the proposed project and accessibility of the ditch for repairs and cleaning. The applicant requested conditions number three B and three C pertaining to specific The applicant requested conditions number 3B and 3C pertaining to specific tree mitigation be amended based on coordination with the city arborist to take place prior to the council hearing. And they have done so. The applicant testified that there would be one large trash dumpster enclosure for the development instead of individual receptacles for each unit to eliminate the issue of receptacles in the right-of-way or blocking sidewalks and driveways. And finally, concerns pertaining to traffic and parking. Key issues of discussion by the commission are as follows. The provision of a pathway from the sidewalk along Spoonbill Avenue to the sidewalk along Linder Road and to the north to the pathway along the Kennedy lateral. The commission directed the applicant to consider revisions to the plat to make the eastern, our, uh, eastern lots R4 size, 8,000 square feet lots, and possibly reduce the density, improve parking and internal circulation, work with A C H D to facilitate a construction entrance off of Linder Road until initial occupancy, and include a pathway connection between lots 58 and 59 from Spoonbill to Linder Road. Concern pertaining to parking and placement of trash carts on pickup day. Reduce the number of units by replacing the duplex units with single-family detached units and possibly reconfiguring the plat so that lots are R4 size and are a pinwheel design off of the cul-de-sac. The commission recommended denial of the project for the following reasons. They felt it didn't fit the comprehensive plan, challenges with turnarounds and access driveways, and revised plat doesn't address the previous concerns of the commission. And again, the applicant is requesting counsel approval of the original plat, as shown, submitted for this project, not the revised one submitted at the last commission hearing. There are no other outstanding issues for counsel tonight, and there has been no written testimony received since the commission hearing. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonya. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Sonya, I apologize if you had said this and I didn't hear it, but can you, can you tell us what the gray area, the shaded area is on the preliminary plat on the left?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pro, counsel, that's the fire department turnaround.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to check. Thank you.
Is demonstrating that they meet the dimensional requirements for that.
Counsel, any further questions for staff? Okay. Now invite the applicant to come forward. I don't know if they're in the room or if they're online. They're, they're in the room. You say your name and address for the record, please. It'll be recognized for 15 minutes.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, counsel, Jim Jewett, 776 East Riverside Drive, E. Lido. So thanks for having me tonight. I would like to comment right off the bat that based on earlier testimony on another application, I'm not hearing in spite of planning and zoning recommendations as now. I think there just needs to be some clarification because I did try to work with them and there was just a lot of confusion of what direction we should go on this infill. So I would like to start then my testimony on the plat on some factual real estate data on where Meridian is today. I checked, I, I'm a licensed real estate broker and associate broker here in Idaho. So I've accessed all the M S L data, M S L data. And today I did a check. So in all of Meridian, for any type of housing, sub 300,000, there was one house for sale. And I assume it will be pending for the end of the day. I checked at 310, 320, and not till I got to 340 or 350 did I find available units for sale. That's the condition of our market today. In our previous plat, landing number 12, which is directly to our north, we did the same size lot, the same size development, and we had 29 lots in there. And we sold homes in there from starting at 275 up to 365. In today's market, those houses would be probably 325 to 385, 390, which in my opinion is still above the starter home. So I've created a successful plat in the first phase. We want to carry it in this phase and at the same time create some diversity in the duplexes. Now, as Sonya showed you through the slides, there was a picture of a duplex that I had built in the previous phase. And those duplexes we built, which is the same one that's the picture shown here, that's the actual picture of the duplex. It's the same plan we had planned on Linder Road. So our concept was to have that front on, so this view you would see from Linder and the garages with access from our new proposed street. Giving diversity in housing, giving a different look on the Linder Road other than the back of a subdivision. That was our concept. Planning and zoning initially liked that concept, but some of the confusion with the parking, on-street parking pathways drove them in our second hearing to maybe not like it as well. So there's part of the clarification we need from the council. What is the vision? And so that's one of the things I'll be asking tonight is what is your vision as well as mine? So, and then by doing this, our duplex concept, our spec level on these duplexes are just like our homes. Granite, nicer floors, nicer tile showers, two, two-gar garages. This unit has 1,620 on one side and 1,580 on the other. So it's just as big as the homes we're building. And what we have in this particular unit here is a owner occupied on one side, renting the other side. It's another concept that I, it's in other bigger markets, and I think it's a market that will happen here to offset some of this increasing cost of housing. People can offset some of their living expenses with rentals. That was what our concept was. The struggle was the on-street parking, which as Sonya pointed out, is not in the UDC. So Sonya specifically asked me to come up with a parking plan. That's what she, I submitted to her and that's what she showed you earlier. Another problem with, um, at planning and zoning was the common drives. Again, UDC allows the common drive. UDC allows up to, I believe it's six units per common drive. P and Z did not want to see more than two houses per common drive. So if I do what P and Z wanted, I'm basically doing an R4 plat. And if I do an R4 plat, everything I built and I just displayed to you, I did in the other phase, I would not be able to do in this phase. So affordable housing at any level, whatever you want to call affordable housing, would not be available here. I had to have to raise the cost of the lots because they're bigger, I have less density. And it's a, it's a financial decision as well as a social decision. And that's, again, what I'll be looking for, some guidance from the council tonight is what do they envision for infills? This particular site is challenged that we only have one access point, and that is off the Spoonbill, which I built a couple of years back. We were denied any access, which I agreed to. We should not have access on the Linder Road. That would not be in our benefit. If you look at our plat, if Sonya will go back, the property directly to our, to our south, they have a cul-de-sac there, and if they would have extended it, had a stub street, that would again, gave us different options. So we're kind of shoehorned in what we have there. We are currently zoned R4 and so I can do an R4 plat, but I really think if we want to help the city and the, some of this real estate issues we have with more closer to entry-level housing, I think we need to consider R8. The pathway issues that the planning and zoning talked about, I currently built a path out to Linder Road in my previous phase. It's just north of here, along the Kennedy lateral, which I piped. Adding another access point from our cul-de-sac strictly out to Linder, I, it just because of the guidelines within the city, it would have taken too much of my property away. I said I would do a private easement with a pathway for the duplex residents, but not necessarily a public one since I already had one directly north of it. At the conclusion of the second planning and zoning hearing, planning and zoning suggested that, albeit that I was very creative in this layout, maybe I should just simply be less creative. Do the single cul-de-sac with the pinwheel. Now, I have drawn that up and I provided, provided to Sonya, I don't know if she can bring it up or not, to show you what that would look like. And, and that is simply a straight R4 plat, meets all the design criteria, does not use common driveways. And I have no objection to it, but I, what I need is guidance. I need guidance from the council on how you want to, infill to be treated. Is R8 appropriate? If you do want on-street parking, how does one gauge that when it's not in the UDC? The trash receptacle issue, I offered the single trash receptacle as an offset to the issue that staff brought up to me that they're having problems with trash receptacles on common drives specifically. Again, there's no UDC guideline for it, so I offered something to try to offset it. So for me to come back and do an R4, the duplex go away because they're, they're only allowed as a conditional use and they're twice as big a lot. So it just, it, it just kind of defeats the purpose. So I guess the questions I would ask counsel are, is the duplex concept an appropriate direction that the city would like to see? And are common driveways in the infill an appropriate way to go? And again, if you want to see this on-street parking, what threshold, what guideline should I use in establishing that? I would also like to point out that in parking, the more parking that you provide, the more parking you will get. That means they'll just fill it up. And Boise, they, they, they don't make you put in extra parking because they, they've already learned that. The only way you're going to control your parking is don't give it to them. On-street parking should be just for guests to come and to visit and to leave, not to park their cars permanently. The one example that planning and zoning did give is during a Super Bowl weekend. I don't know, with COVID, we may not have a Super Bowl weekend for a while. So, uh, so what I'm asking of counsel tonight is interaction. Tell me what you envision for these infills. Tell me what, how you feel about the duplex concept. Because if it's not, then I would gladly accept a remand back to planning and zoning to go ahead and just do a straight R4. So with that, I would stand here and would take any questions.
Thank you, Jim. Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holgland.
I have a question, Mr. Jewett, on, on your duplex from here, looking at this, the, uh, the driveways look fairly long. But how, how long are the duplexes?
Yeah, on the plat map, you mean?
Yes, yes.
Um, there, there, a couple of them are long enough. Do you have my duplex layout?
I'm.
One garage is set back a double depth. So you have the floor plan for the duplex? But one duplex is set back 20 feet from the other duplex. So one is here and the other one's here. So one driveway is twice as deep as the other. The one that's the shortest would accommodate two additional vehicles behind the garage doors.
And, and Mr. Mayor, just to follow up with a comment.
Councilman Holgland.
Comment about if you provide the parking, it will be filled up. And it's just interesting, just a commentary on our society today, we are a car culture, especially in this west, in this valley. And it just amazes me, even in our subdivision, all, uh, you know, single-family homes and family across from us, parents, two kids that drive and four cars. Because it's that time of life for them and it fills up their driveway plus on the street. And then, of course, if you get renters like we have down the street and you got five, six people in that house. Yeah, you got six vehicles down there. So it's just one of those things we grapple with and I don't know if there is an answer to it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Maybe just a comment on one of the questions, just feedback for me. But I think what really resonated with me from the planning and zoning commission is this isn't like a boulevard where you have a true pedestrian life on the street where you'd expect the homes to face the street. This isn't downtown Meridian, and I've actually driven down streets where it's like our typical subdivisions and then all of a sudden there's like a random set of three duplexes facing a, a busy roadway and it just looks totally out of place. You know, so that, that made sense to me. I, I sympathize with you. I mean, infill development's really hard. This just, it, it just, it hasn't, it hasn't gotten to the creative point that it's found something that feels like it fits. And I, and I don't, and we can try to give you as much guidance as possible, but I don't think our job is ultimately to, I'm just going to be very frank, I don't think it's our job to help make something that's going to work. I think we could try to give you as much guidance as possible and hopefully the planning staff will as well. But that's the challenge with infill. It's an economic point. It, it's a, it, it's very tough and I sympathize. But you know, at some of those points, I, I, I get, I kind of get what they're saying. You know, the shared common driveway thing, that, that's been a big point for us lately and we're going to take a look at our UDC. You know, we know we have an issue there in Meridian, don't get me wrong, but it, it, it's got to be workable. You know, to me, that field's got to be workable in terms of navigating it. I'll be quiet now, but that, just off the cuff, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
Counsel, any further questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton or Holgland?
Uh, Borton. Um, just, Jim, to answer your question, which is a fair question. Um, I think it depends, quite frankly. I think each, each project is different and there are instances in the community where the, the scale and location of a project is more minimal to, um, um, shared attached units, common drives, they integrate better. And, and there's some areas that, that just doesn't work necessarily. And so I think we're supportive of creative solutions in infill, but it doesn't necessarily mean any one component will always work there. So I, I reviewed all of this with that same concern. I thought I'd love to see an R4 as it's zoned be what is presented. See what that looks like. Understanding that might eliminate an opportunity to provide a smaller, more affordable house in this particular application, it still might be appropriate considering the circumstances and conditions of this property. So I, I guess it depends on the application, quite frankly.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, I duly, truly appreciate your comments. And when we look at a piece of property, um, we look at what, what's done prior. And that's what I've looked at in this, the prior subdivision, R8 was acceptable. We have two common driveways in there and 29 lots. So I, I do appreciate it. Now Sonya has pulled up the R4 plat that is, let's call it less creative. Because it's just cul-de-sac with, with eight R4 lots. And, um, as you mentioned, it, it doesn't provide some of that diversity, but it certainly meets, and this meets the complaint. This is eight units for the 2.3 acres, so we're still within the three to eight range. So I realize that an R8 zoning is not an entitlement. It is a privilege. And I'm at the privilege of this council to either grant it or not grant it. And I would respect whatever decision this council made. The duplex would be a component of R8, would not be a component of R4. And so I think that's probably the first decision that I'll ask you folks to make is R8 or not R8. Because that answers the rest of the questions. I think at that point, we just, I will ask for just a remand back to planning and zoning to take this plat, which doesn't solve the on-street parking issue because it's, it still provides the same amount of on-street parking because you can't park within a cul-de-sac. But it does change a lot. It does change diversity. It changes, it changes the housing count, which is going to change the car count. I do appreciate your comments.
Mr. Neri? Or, or Mr. Mayor, I guess, a question for Mr. Neri.
Councilman Borton.
Thank you. In that scenario, is the, is the process then, like the rezone request change if it becomes an R4 plat? That portion of the application is withdrawn and the plat itself gets remanded? Because you no longer have a rezone request? What would happen there?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Borton, I mean, obviously completely new noticing is going to have to occur, right? And a new, a, a revised application is going to have to be submitted. So I would simply, if the direction of the council is to remand, just remand all of it, the way it is. And then again, a, a new applica, if the direction is the council's preference, I think we'll Mr. J- the way it is, and then, again, a, a new applica- if the direction is the council's preference, I think what Mr. Jewitt is asking is, if the council's preference is for it to remain at, at a certain, at the R4 zone that's currently zoned, then to remand that, and then he'll work with the staff and submit a new application that'll have to be re-noticed. Unless I misunderstood him. That's what I thought he was asking.
Mr. Neri, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Um, he, he would be reducing the number of buildable lots from 10 to 7, and then it would be a, just the existing zoning. Would that still require a re-notice?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Because it's a different project.
Okay.
Counsel, any further questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, Mr. Jewitt. Mr. Court, did we have anyone sign up to testify on this item?
Mr. Mayor, nobody was signed up for this item.
Okay, is there anybody else in the chambers? No? Okay, well, we've eliminated that possibility. We do have some people who are still listening to this. Is there anyone in the Zoom call who would like to provide testimony on this item, as it's a public hearing? If so, please indicate by using the raise your hand button on Zoom, and the clerk will bring you in. Okay, counsel, I see no one who would like to provide testimony on this item. Would the applicant like to make any final comments at this time?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Um, so if I understand, uh, Mr. Neri's comment, if we remanded the whole thing back, I could simply just withdraw my annexation, I mean, excuse me, my rezone application through the re-notice process. Would that withdrawal have to come back to council for acceptance?
Uh, no, if the direction of the council is that that's the, they're, they're not willing to move forward with the rezone, when we remand it all back, basically, you're going to submit a revised application, and with, and include with that a withdrawal of that request.
Thanks for the clarification. That, with that, I don't have any other comments.
Thank you. So counsel, I'll turn this over to you for any questions, comments, or pose the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Borton.
Starts just the brief discussion. I, it's, that's what I captured in this application. It's just so unique to this property that the challenges that, that P&amp;Z wrestled with, and the applicant made a, a good-faith attempt to try and solve, I, I don't think can be solved with the R8. I think the R8 sort of invited some of the challenges. Um, duplexes fit some places, but maybe not here as presented, so I think the applicant's um, efforts to find a solution and if it's a remand and have a new plat designed that's consistent with its existing R4 zoning, that might in turn solve a lot of the problems that P&amp;Z rightfully wrestled with. So that was, it's a thought process of where we may want to go on this one.
And Mr. Mayor.
Hi, Councilman Holgland.
Yeah, likewise, I appreciate the effort of the applicant to, to find a way forward on that, and working with the commission to, to figure things out, and they looked at a couple of things, and, and, uh, had, had difficulty with it, and, and in looking at the, the R8 request and how it came about, it just, it, it didn't sit well with me, but I do appreciate the applicant trying to find solutions to it, and and I, I think if we remand it back and, and give it another go, we'll, we'll see what happens on that end, and see if we can, uh, get, get an infill project completed.
Counsel, any further comments, or do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holgland.
I move that we close the public hearing for Landing South H-2020-0005.
Second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holgland.
After hearing the staff and applicant testimony, I remand file for H-2020-0005 back to the zoning commission.
So I'm, I'm, I don't know if the other people were mo- had the same troubles I had. I could not hear what was stated, although I know what the motion was, but...
That, you didn't, did the motion to, uh, I move that after considering all staff and applicant testimony, that I move we remand H-2020-0005 back to the planning zoning commission.
Second.
Have a motion second to remand the item back to pl- planning zoning. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Borton.
Just, um, for clarity, if the motion includes what the applicant had made representations, that the remand would be then to bring forward an R4 project, that the rezone request would be through that process withdrawn, and it would be, the R4 app- R4 plat is what would be presented to P&amp;Z upon remand?
And, and notice for a new hearing, too.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I would include that in my motion to, to make sure that is clear.
Okay, second agrees.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, court will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton?
Aye.
Cavanagh?
Aye.
Harrow?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Holgland?
Aye.
Byrne?
Aye.
All ayes, motion is agree to. So with that, we will move on to item seven, or item eight. I request withdrawal of the application for the Bills of Twelve Oaks H-2020-004. I will open this request with staff comments.
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council, staff really doesn't have any comments. Um, this request is directly from the applicant that you just heard from on the previous project. But he's here if he'd like, if you'd like him to comment on his request.
Thank you. Counsel, would you like to hear from the applicant on this request at this time? Sure. Mr. Jewitt, if, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
You're here. Don't waste it.
Um, Mr. Mayor, counsel, Jim Jewitt again, 776 East Riverside Drive, Idaho. Um, I'll try to be short, but I want to make sure I, I'm clear with my explanation. We started this process, uh, about two years ago, with this additional property adding into Twelve Oaks. Our original concept was only a portion of this property coming in to the Twelve Oaks and coming in as an annexation. The remainder being left as future commercial, recognizing that the comp plan had commercial in that designation. Through our meetings with, with the staff, um, there was a desire to bring the entire parcel in, and the comp plan was to find the support our application of just adding more apartments. And as my previous testimony, we, we don't necessarily know if commercial is viable there, but I am acceptance of the fact that it's possible down the road. And I'm willing to let that probability exist. So what I'd like to do is withdraw this application, and let me retune my original application and bring it back, which left a significant part of the property as future commercial. Through the process when we started, again, it was a much smaller, uh, addition to the Twelve Oaks project. With that, we asked for an extension of the sewer and water out of Twelve Oaks into this property to accommodate that growth, and we were granted approval by Public Works, and we actually already built that. So we already have infrastructure in place to accommodate what our initial concept was, not for the current concept that you saw recently, but the original. So, instead of having a one-year moratorium placed on me to bring back that, that subsequent application, I would rather just withdraw this, let me retool it, and bring it back. Um, leaving a significant amount of that ground as future, and let's wait and see what happens with Linder Road, the overpass, how growth happens in Meridian. Um, we're not in a hurry to, to make a bad judgment, so I'm willing to see what we can do to appease the council and and like our project with some level of expansion. So with that, I I withstand for any questions, but I guess it's not really that a question, I think.
Counsel, do you have any questions at this time? Okay, thank you. Then, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holgland.
I would move that we accept the request to withdraw the application. Bills of Twelve Oaks H-2020-0014.
Second.
Have a motion second to accept the, um, offer to withdraw the application request. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it? And thank you, Mr. Jewitt, for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, we will move on to ordinance number 20-18, 20-1890. I'll ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on to that, uh, Mr. Jewitt had a question. Will you entertain that?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, counsel. I had a parks issue that I thought was going to be on the agenda tonight. Did that get handled in a previous session on my bridge at Southridge?
Mr. Mayor, I think I can address that. Uh, Mr. Neri can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that was approved on the consent agenda. Is that a development agreement with T&amp;M Holdings? No, sorry, wrong one, that is.
Number 11?
Number 11, Parks and Recreation Department Pedestrian Bridge Construction Agreement between Open Door Rentals and City of Meridian to Connect Pathway Segments. That was approved on the 4/30 meeting.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted clarification, because I've been waiting for that to get that bridge built.
You gotta win.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody's effort. Thank you. Good night.
Okay, well, we'll return to item number nine, ordinance number 20-1890, and ask the clerk to read this by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance 20-1890, ordinance related to H-2020-0039, Ascent Townhomes for Annuiation of a Portion of a Portion of a Section 10.
Chris?
Boise, Meridian.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
You'll need to pop the volume for those who are on the outside looking in.
Okay, I took the mask down.
There you go.
This is an ordinance related to H-2020-0039, Ascent Townhomes for Annuiation of a Portion of a Portion of a Section 10. Township 3 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. As described in the Attachment A and annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian as requested by the City of Meridian. Establishing determining the land use zoning classification of 5.25 acres of land from RUT to R4T, medium-high-density residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code. Providing a copy of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Counsel, you've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there anybody who'd like it read in its entirety? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor. I, I move approve- I move approval of ordinance number 20-18, uh, ordinance number 20-1891 with, uh, suspension of the rules.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Holgland, that was 1890. Is the ordinance wrong?
What's 20-1891?
It's a 20-1890. 20-1891.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I, I jumped to the next one. I move approval, we'll start over. Ordin- I move approval of ordinance number 20-1890 with suspension of rules.
Second.
Have a motion second to approve the item and a suspension of the rules. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it? Uh, next item is item 10, ordinance number 20-1891, ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance related to H-20190133 Lupine Cove for annexation of a parcel of land being a portion of the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 33. Township 4 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. As described in Attachment A and annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian as requested by the City of Meridian. Establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 10.41 acres of land from RUT to R8, medium-density residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code. Providing a copy of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Counsel, you've heard this item read by title, and is anyone who'd like it read in its entirety? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor. I move approval of ordinance, ordinance number 20-1891 with, uh, suspension of reading rules.
Second.
Have a motion second to approve ordinance number 20-1891 under suspension of the rules. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it? The items agreed to. Anything under future meeting topics?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I would like to have a future discussion on whether we could find a way to uh, allow for the planning office to use their discretion, uh, to have a verbal summary of requests for extensions of final plats, instead of writing up these extensive memos.
Um, so long as legal is okay with it, I have no issue with it, and do we need a discussion about it? But noted, duly noted, duly noted, duly noted. Perfect.
Perfect.
Anything else under this feature being item? Or do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, move for we adjourn.
Second.
Have a, a motion second to adjourn, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Nay, we are adjourned.
Good night, guys.
Good night.